We, it's six o'clock, we'll call the Village Board, cause public hearing and Village Board meeting to order. Start with a roll call.
Dale, sir?
Here.
Goodman?
Here.
Herbison?
Hurd?
Here.
Cots?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Here.
Rapp?
Here.
I did just text Herbison, she was not gonna do me either, so we should expect her.
Okay.
Good. Uh, pledge allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certified open meeting law requirements of the met.
A notice of the meeting and the agenda was posted in the three public places and the newspapers were notified.
Alright, thanks for that. Uh, number five on the agenda is to adopt agendas.
Adopt agenda, motion to adopt agenda.
Second.
Motion of the second, the board has a motion to adopt agenda, any comments, questions? Alright, all in favor of adopting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Nate? Please have it. Uh, number six, recognition of visitors or citizen input. If there's anybody who would like to speak? How long is the time to do that? Do you have something?
I have a, I just, we all got the emails, but I just thought I'd, I guess, bring forward for public knowledge that we got a couple of, um, letters regarding the parking. And I don't, I'm not sure if there's, um, nobody replied at all or anything, so I just wanted to bring that forward at least to potentially have a discussion or something. Um, we had two requests, one from Scott Rowe at 289 East Adams, requesting permission to put a disabled truck in the backyard, uh, in order for another vehicle to be parked in the driveway instead of on the grass. And also wondering if pavers, um, on the other side of the driveway wouldn't be acceptable uh, in place of a concrete area for the time being. And then another, um, from Mitch Barca on South Liberty Street regarding solid surface parking, uh, concerned with, um, where he's placing his boat. So, like I said, I know we all got that email, but I just wanted to bring it forth for public knowledge.
Okay, yeah. Has any of them been into the office at all?
Yes.
Yes?
I've talked with both of them.
Okay.
Karen did follow up with me to make sure that I, I did re-chat to both of those as well. Um, I've talked with, I've talked with, um-
Mitch?
Mr. Rowe, uh, before and after, and then again, um, I, as it turns out, what he actually was cited for, he's requesting for permission for something that he wasn't actually cited for. He, he got a, the police department went out and started issuing tickets. They've sent out a lot of, uh, letters, but they started issuing tickets. One of those gentlemen was ticketed and he thought it was for the drive, truck in his driveway. He's got a, apparently in the past, he'd been ticketed for an inoperable vehicle. And he thought that that was the concern. We talked back and forth and he's not happy with it. He doesn't like the ordinance, he thinks that we're being too restrictive by saying you can't park things in your backyard or, and then what he thought was the case was in his front yard. But he doesn't like the ordinance and doesn't feel like we should be, uh, regulating it. But when it got right down to it, what he was actually cited for was the hard surface violation for having the devices in the right of way. He's got a boat and a motorcycle, he's got for sale signs on that have been there all summer. And then he's got some other, he's got more than two vehicles in his backyard that are, or two devices, I should say, in his backyard. Anyways, we went back and forth on it, he doesn't like it, um, and we might hear more from him, but he at least understood what it was that he was ticketed for and what he was actually asking.
It's been addressed.
Yeah. They, they're both, and the other one, um, once again, he recognizes the, the thought process. He actually thought his neighbor called and complained, like, "I talked with my neighbor, explained that it wasn't just him, it wasn't just by neighbor complaints, that we'd had enough of them around the village that everybody who was out of compliance was, sent a letter, was, tried to get to him. Like, "Yeah, but it just, it looks better to be along the side of my garage than it does in my backyard. Yeah, I'm moving the backyard, but it looks trashier in my backyard than it does along the-" Anyways, we talked back and forth and I, we addressed it, but once again, he doesn't like the ordinance either. He thinks it would be better if he could have it alongside his garage and it's noted, but- And, and he understood, he understood that it, we went, we looked over the history and I can't remember how long he lived here, was it four or five years? Told me how long, it's like it's never been an issue before. We went through the history and that it wasn't a new rule, in fact, that this was more lenient than we'd been in the past at the village, with the same conversation with Mr. Rowe, that the Village Board had worked on this quite a lot and they're actually trying to be more lenient and trying to be less strict than what it was to be more workable for people. Both of their arguments were, well, it ought to be different than it is, but-
So, I guess in the future, if that, can we, like, maybe shoot on an email then, so that way I'm not bringing it up again 'cause we haven't had a meeting since that, the dates that these were sent, so? Just to make sure that we know that it's been addressed? Cause like if, I don't wanna email the person or email you after you've already talked to them and then maybe just say, "Hey, everybody, I've touched base with Mitch," or whoever.
Yeah.
So that way we don't-
I actually wasn't in on either of those originally, those were both forwarded to me, so that, um-
Oh.
I probably, um, honestly, I don't remember if I reported back to you or Karen or not, but I probably should've reported to everybody. I probably should've reported to everybody, I think I reported back, but I probably should've reported to everybody so that everybody knew that it had been-
I guess, I didn't realize that you weren't copied on here, or you weren't included on it.
Yeah.
That would make sense, but-
Most of the time when people try to send stuff, they send it to the board, they don't send it. Unless it's coming from Renee. Renee sends everything she sends to you guys, to me, but if it's coming from a citizen, they're not sending it to me either.
Gotcha.
So if you see something from a citizen and you think I should be responding, Karen did just that, she said, "Hey, has anybody responded to this?" I don't wanna do it if it's already happened.
Right.
And she has, anyways.
Perfect.
I will try and help that.
Yeah, a, a simple response and just say, you know, the board can address the set meetings if they can make it to the meeting, is a good place to come and-
And I did, uh, address that to both of those, that, um, there's a public comment period at the beginning of each meeting, if you have, and you'd like to come, comment on it, we have time set aside for both of those.
And it doesn't prevent you from going through another iteration and doing modifications, right? If there's something that comes, and I don't, again, it was complicated before to come up with all the cases for that, but it's definitely something you can bring back up again if we keep having, um, comments that seem like they're valid comments, or like, you know, parking a small boat beside your garage versus a backyard, or confusion on side yards. And we went through it, tried to do a good shot at it the first time, it doesn't mean it's perfect, so? I guess we're just saying, we, feel free to bring it to a committee and start on, um, some slighter modifications, I would imagine this time, but something. Anything else from correspondence, citizen input, or anything in that category?
Is that what you'd like to do? Shove it back to a committee and try to-
I don't know, if that's what the board would like to do, I guess we can, like, talk about it again. We could do that, I think that was Sheena's committee last time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, are the, have, have you heard or has anybody else heard from more than these two since we've reconfigured or?
Call, call it hands.
I'm sure that you've been really excited.
I just feel like we, we went through quite a process to reconfigure things and- I mean-
We have gotten-
Nobody's gonna be happy with-
We have gotten several comments of people thinking that their neighbors ought to be cleaned up, um, we-
Yes.
We didn't send them all, but for instance, the last one that we've sent, you know, we get them on the bills from time to time, but the last one we were sending that such and such White Street, or you know, such and such Hoover, they're outside of this, can you please enforce the ordinance? Can you please enforce the ordinance? We have gotten a few of those as well, so it's not just, it's people who don't like it, and there's people who want it to be enforced, so there is some of both.
Yeah, if I, Nate, I, my theory on it is, is that we've improved on making ordinances more available and now people see it, and it kinda snowballed into sort of some complaints and it got out of control, right? So, it wasn't, it was valid, right, comment from others that it wasn't a problem before because people didn't know.
It wasn't.
And, and now people have ordinances to look at and they know what they can file complaints on. We had an out of date ordinance and-
There had no, there hadn't been any enforcement for-
Yeah.
decades, basically, so, once you start, I mean, yes, it's gonna be difficult for some people because even though it is lean, more lenient, is it being enforced now? So that's gonna be new at some point. If there's, if there's a subject that becomes very relative over and over and over and over, I would look at it then, but up until that point where the same thing keeps coming up, I, I think I would continue to just roll it out the way it is.
Yeah.
And use it the way it is until-
I was trying to get to the forward summary, I think where you're trying to get to is I think it'll settle down.
I think it'll, you know, once people get used to it, there's-
And there'll be less complaints, less enforcement.
It's a big change for, you know, several people at first.
Okay. Alright, thanks for bringing those up and, um, we'll move on to number seven, approval of minutes. So hopefully, y'all had some time to look at those, I think there was three meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
What was all those plan commissioners, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. The two meetings were the ones that were back to back. Yep, 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 that's right.
Motion to approve minutes as read.
Second. Motion, second, to approve the minutes as written. Written, sorry. Yeah. Board has a motion, any comments, questions? All in favor of approving the min- minutes as written, say aye.
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 Opposed, Nate? Alright, great. Number eight, financial report.
There's just a few items to call to your attention this month. Oh, um, after I sent the packet out on Friday, you do have a revised one with highlighting on it now. And I didn't send an email to tell you that that was there, but I entered some more bills and they are reflected on here. And you also haven't updated one of the bills, but I'll talk about the bills in a minute, but? So, the police school liaison program, we did receive the money from the school in October. Uh, one of the bills that we got in that you'll be looking at paying is for the legal ad for the public hearing. And because that's so big with all the columns and everything, it's very expensive, $430. And so you'll see that put us over budget, but we will, in that category. But we will try to be under in some other categories so that we stay within the whole group, that we stay within budget. And there isn't really anything else, like, there was some training that happened, you can, those are, you can see them yourself, but those were the two items I was gonna call your attention to. Are there any questions?
Alright, thanks Renee. Anybody have any questions for Renee on the budget comparison report, financial report?
So, the total expenditures are at 148.72%.
Yeah, that's because of the one, um, the 57900, that $593,000, which was-
Which is on the transfers.
Yeah. And there's not a budget for that because it wasn't, but that's the way the auditor recorded it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So yeah, we'll just be looking for a motion in a second on this whenever you, board's ready.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion in second to approve the budget comparison, financial report. Or has the motion, any other questions, comments?
Don't know how to write an it. Don't know how to do that yet.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Dale, sir?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the bills.
So you can see I've highlighted some to call your attention to. First, I'll tell you where I have the red lines with the arrows. Those are the new ones that were added since the first time I sent it out on Friday. Also, when you go to the second page, you'll see them just underlined in red. That's the new ones that you didn't see on the first version that came on Friday. And so then, just the bills that are not common monthly, the Senv Laptop, which was the hall parking lot doing asphalt wedging. And then some street patches for water breaks. Ayers and Associates, you will see they did the dam inspection.
That's only half of it.
Correct, you're right, yeah, thank you. Ellers and Associates, this is a yearly fee because of having the bond issues. You will see I have noted a group of the bills to Fox Brothers Construction that are part of the draw request. And then there were a couple of repairs for the Ford Explorer that I have highlighted in yellow. You can also see the notations for the other bills for the draw request. And then on the next page, you will see that we paid the rural development debt payment. We do that two times a year. This time, it's only interest. When we pay in May, we do principal and interest, but in November, it's just interest. That's all I was gonna call your attention to, let me know if you have any questions.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion, second, to pay the bills. Board has a motion, any comments, questions?
Thank you, Renee.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote.
Hurd?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Dale, sir?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Okay, on to the administrator report.
Okay, um, couple things, obviously, uh, we were all in our last meeting, but we have now closed on the phase one, if we will, of the greater development, so CNM now owns that property. They've actually submitted the permits for those first two buildings. And I think they're shooting for a December, um, plating for the rest of it, to see if preliminary plat on the rest of it. But we'll see if that happens or not, but that's what they were shooting for when I talked with Cody. But I'm really happy that we're finally at that point, a lot of people put a lot of work into that, so I'm happy that there's permits pulled at this point. Just a couple things I wanted to draw your attention to. I know we talked about it a little bit during our budget hearing, and if we approve our, in our preliminary budgets, if we approve the budget tonight, um, it will be included. But our health insurance has to change once again, we've selected health insurance for three years in a row now. Really excited about that, but, uh, our current health provider has exited the market. They're no longer an option, um, so the provider, we work with benefit advisors, um, to look for a comparable plan at a comparable price, um, and we, we found one that's comparable, and we're talking single-digit increases. It changes, um, based on the employee, whether you're age, cause they're age rated in family versus single versus double, but we're in single-digit increases opposed to double or, yeah, there's 20, 30, 40, 50% increases on certain pla- different plans, so I was happy to be between, well, they were all single digits, from high to low, single digits depending on who it was. But that is baked into the budget that you guys have seen, but I did want to point out that that will be a new provider once again this year. We had an audit with USDA for our compliance on our loan servicing, um, they do a one-year audit, then they're supposed to do some periodically, so they, actually were trying to audit us for a loan we've already paid off as well, but it was a same audit, so I didn't really care, but I did point out we'd already paid off one of the ones they were trying to audit us for. I believe we, uh, passed all of their, their requirements, um, and then I wanted to talk that our TIF joint review, our TID joint review board met, and they did extend, um, TID one for an additional, up to additional three years, but TID one was going to, um, have a projected revenue shortfall, so? The way that project works, I assume you guys know this, but I, just in case, when you set up a TIF, you have eligible project costs, you spend the money, and you're taking the money from the school district, from the county, from the CVTC, and they pay those costs back. If there's not enough revenue generated to pay the cost back, the municipality ultimately is the one that holds that responsibility. In this case, we were eligible for an extension. If the project costs were all eligible and there's a revenue shortfall, you can extend it under a couple different terms. And the joint review board did go ahead and approve that extension. It's an automatic three-year extension, it won't be for a full three years, we'll only have to do it for about a year and then they'll close it early. But the review board did extend it, so we will be able to be made whole on TIF one, so, yay. But I did want to report that, that that has been pushed out an additional year. On the police report, I guess, most of this is, you know, you guys can read it, but the police report, you will notice, we're down a little bit this, and call volume, we've been, had some pretty high call volume for the last couple of months. We have gone down a little bit, which I'm happy to report. And then, and you can read the rest of it, but I guess that's my report.
Okay, any questions or comments for Jared Dale, or administrator? What's a jitter?
Jitter.
Jitter.
I knew what it was supposed to be.
Sorry. It's, it's a new kind of jitter that's been uniquely designed for Fall Creek that fits our pipes exclusively, but you know-
So you call it a jitter and stuff?
We had to rename it jitter.
It's a jitter-jitter.
Sorry about that.
It's just jitter in the water pressure and frees up a lot of things, yeah. Alright, thanks, thanks for that. Any, uh, committee, I don't think we've had any committee meetings since the last, um, meeting, so we shouldn't have any, there, does anybody have any comments there at all? Any upcoming meetings or anything that we're aware of yet? Okay, unfinished business, we are blank on that front, so we're getting down to the new business. Uh, 13A, pay request for Keller Park Fall Field. There's some progress being made out there and we should, we talked about it in, in the bills. You can see those there for mostly fill and sand, I think. Again, this is, uh, Bartow Builders Forum that he's been keeping track of.
Make a motion to pay the request.
Second.
Motion, second, to pay the, make, pay requests for the Keller Park Fall Field as written, I assume, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, board has the motion, any, any comments, questions? I don't think Lyman probably donated-
I know.
65K in lumber, but I think that may be just the total, I, I don't know. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Cots?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Dale, sir?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
I would still expect a summary from Matt coming up sometime on what, what's at the foundation and, you know, what's coming from us.
He's hoping that will be, uh, ready in the escrow in December. Shills is cutting the check and then they're transferring all the funds to that escrow account. He hopes that that will be ready for December, um, meeting, so.
When are they shutting it down for?
I think they have more, like, they're-
They're done.
Yeah.
What are we discussing, I can't hear, it's so low.
Oh, the, uh, the summary, I was just saying, there should be, Matt should be presenting a summary of, you know, the donations that are in the foundation or funnel through the foundation and at the title of company and what we've contributed, what, what charity or other in-kind donations have been made, so? You should, um, expect that here in December or January, I would think.
Thank you.
Okay, 13B, Fountain at Fall Creek.
So, we've already talked about this, um, Luther Strasberg is donating the funds for a fountain. In fact, he's already donated those funds to the village. I need to go ahead and order that fountain. Luther, uh, found the fountain, he wanted to purchase enough, or donate enough money to purchase. He found an electric, uh, an electrician to come and install it. Luther, 100% has, has been awesome on this, done all the work and is making a very generous donation. However, it's not in, uh, it wasn't in our already approved 2021 budget, or 2022 budget, so it's outside of my signature authority to order that fountain because it's over the amount. So we need approval from the board to approve the fountain for which Luther has donated the money.
We reimburse him.
Yeah, well, he's already donated money. If, if it turns out that the cost is a little bit different, Luther has, um, stated that he will make an additional contribution next year if it's a little bit, if it's a little bit off, I mean, Luther is trying-
He's very kind.
Luther is being very, very kind, um, along with that, I think we need to do some sort of memorial to just be a real honest, uh, a plaque of something that thanks Luther for his-
Or we could put in Memorial Park, cause that's where it's gonna be at.
I, I would, I would agree, but you know, put a granite, uh, you know, a paver somewhere that's got a, or a brass plaque. I, I don't care, but, but I think we need to do something, um, along with this. But I would like, uh, the authorization to spend the funds that Luther has donated in purchasing and, um, contracting with an electrician to install the fountain.
I'd make a motion that we authorize Jared to make the order of the fountain parts and pieces, with some money that Luther Strasberg has donated.
Second.
Motion, second, you don't need an amount or anything, just whatever, okay. Sounds like we're good there. The board has a motion to approve Jared to purchase the fountain, with the donated funds from Luther. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Do you have an install, uh, obviously not anytime soon, but are you thinking, I'm just wondering, like, if you do a little something in the spring or whenever it gets installed, like a little-
Yeah, I think we oughta do a sworake.
Public, well, I don't know, something or other, put that to committee.
A sworake.
That, that would be-
That's a fun word.
Yeah, that, that would be-
If he wants to say a few words or something.
That would be awesome to do, I mean, ribbon cutting, or you know, whatever we're calling it for the fountain, but, um, the-
A valve turning.
A valve turning. I can get behind that. Um, the electrician is planning on being there, um, in the spring, uh, after-
After thaw.
After freeze, thaw, sock, and stuff, we don't wanna freeze that-
Yeah.
Equipment, but, um, that's part of what I wanna make sure that I'm on a schedule and that my price doesn't change between now and then, cause I just don't want it to. Um, but yeah, I think we absolutely oughta do something like that in the spring.
Okay, thanks. Board still has a motion, any, anything else? Do a roll call vote, please.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Dale, sir?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
Cots? Yes.
Okay, 13C, uh, to put on RFP or not for village attorney service. Okay, thirteen C, to put on RFP or not for Village Attorney Services. Garrett Nick's firm has transitioned or merged with another firm. So we were talking about maybe it was a good opportunity to just see what was out there for rates, if we were still comparable or not. Jared got an email today, as it turns out, that Garrett was not interested. You know, with the merger, he was going to be focusing on other types of services, so it didn't really fit with what he would be doing in the future. So there is no or not anymore, it is, sounds like it is an RFP.
Okay. When will this happen?
ASAP.
As soon as possible now.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, so the motion in a second from Sheena and Matt?
Do you read that motion?
To go up for RFP for Village Attorney Services. Any comments or questions? I have just a comment, I guess Garrett did say he would, would stay on until replacement, right? So...
Yeah, and he said that all of his files and everything, he said, nobody might come, you know, this isn't a service we're going to continue to offer, you know. I'm not conflicted in any way, shape, or form, I'm happy to tell you anything you'd like to know on any potential attorneys. I'm happily turn over all my files, everything I have. He wants to make his amicable of the handover as humanly possible, so I was excited to hear that. Anything he has, he wants to pass on, so.
But if I have it right in the letter, if we use him, he's just going to use other attorneys.
I think he's, I think he's going to continue to service us for the immediate future, but yeah, and yeah.
And Jared, the league of municipalities, they have a listing of good guys and bad guy attorneys, you know, so that, you know, that people have come and said, you wouldn't want to deal with these, but these are really good ones for villages, so.
I know they have that for contractors. The utilization of that list is a little bit fuzzy, because some people, I don't, I don't know.
But whoever puts, you know, answers, we should at least check them out and see, see if the league knows anything about them, that they're okay.
Absolutely. And there's, I think there's nothing wrong with asking Garrett, to be real honest, what his professional opinion on it is and doing that. I, yeah, there, there are a couple of attorneys in Eau Claire, municipal attorneys in Eau Claire that I think would be worth consulting to ask their opinions as well.
Well...
My, my, my point is, I think that this is an important decision, we really ought to spend a little bit of time and thought on it.
Yeah, let's, let's...
And I'm not sure that that's something, and I don't mean this to sound bad, but I'm not sure that something any of us have used a lot of other attorneys, I think checking their reputation and how they've worked for other municipalities is going to be very important on this. We want to make sure that we have.
Yeah, and then you should check too with Todd Novak, he's the committee chair of the local government, that's a state legislator, and I've spent quite a bit of time talking to him, and so he's got a lot of good ideas too for that. So we can check with him too.
Absolutely.
Are you hooking us up?
I am. I, I, guys, there's so many resources available to us, it's, you know, our eyes, my eyes are open, I mean, there's so much we could do.
Okay.
Wow, didn't know about all that before.
Okay. Lost track. All right, anything else on RFP, comments, questions? We had a motion second to go with, and so all in favor of going up for RFP for Village Attorney Services, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Aye's have it. So thirteen D, solar panel location for Eagles Nest and Keller Park.
Right, I'm going to take off with that, okay?
Yep.
Explain what's going on. We have the Eagles Nest up, but we want to monitor what's going to happen in the Eagles Nest, so we want to put a camera up there that can tilt and, you know, be controlled, and then it has to be powered, and there's no power out there. And then we have to have a radio to send the signal back to the library, to a special computer that can then interpret all that and then put the picture up there, and then we want it to be able to stream it on the internet, so you don't have to come to the Fall Creek Library personally, you could just look at it anywhere, and we're hoping that we can get all that done. And actually, all the equipment is ordered, it's no cost to the village, we have a local business, my local business is, is funding the project. And so, problem is, is that we have to have electricity to run that radio and that camera, and so we have to have, there's two solar panels that have to operate it, and they have to face towards the south and the west, and we have to be able to place them. We can place them on the ground, there's room, barely, as long as we don't flood, the, the pond doesn't flood, which I don't, I've never seen it do, but when they're on the ground, as you know, we've had some vandalism occur in the park. And you know, we used to have an archery range out there, and then finally we just gave up on it because it was vandalized so often, it's just like, and then we've had some kids, and you saw in the report, you know, in the police report, we've got some kids that are, I don't know, they don't have anything better to do with their time, just go around and destroy property, you know? And so I hate to put those expensive solar panels on the ground right there, and then, you know, somebody can, so we're trying to mount them in a tree, and Excel Energy's willing to put in a pole and put them on pole. Excel Energy's going to do all for free. They're going to just take the equipment, they're going to put all of it up there, and we're trying to get it done before December first, because it's in early December, these birds start to look for a nest, and once they nest, we don't want to get up there and disturb them, because then they may leave forever. So, so we're trying to, I'm, what, what I'm looking for is approval from the board. Excel is waiting for us to say it's okay, and then they're going to come out and say, well, if we put a pole right here, then we can mount them, or we can put them on this tree, you know, which is next to the eagle tree, I call it the eagle tree, you know, that would just be a little bit to the west, because the one that's to the east is, it's too old and could fall down if, you know, by time.
I'd like to see one.
So we're, we're looking for approval for the location or for purchase of the...
No.
No, just the location, just to say it's okay to put a couple, and they're, they're big, do you see the dimensions on them, sixty-five by thirty-five?
That's why, okay.
Yeah, they're not this little thing, you know, they...
Yeah, I think you just need a, so I think we'll just need a motion to go with it, because Excel will come in and they'll want a waiver to be able to go back there and do that.
They can, because they have to get their truck in there and say, I can't get the truck in here, but we could do their...
Motion to move forward.
Okay.
On a pole.
I want it on a pole.
We need signature authority.
You want it on a pole, not on a tree.
Yeah.
A tree, I mean, a pole could blow down too, but a tree has a tendency to get, to grow around it or over it, or get bugs or damage and fall down, and I would like to see it put on a treated pole.
Be nice to get twenty years out of it, or thirty or more.
I think it'd be great to be on a pole too.
So, motion.
I'm good with it if it's on a pole.
Motion on a pole in a second.
Second.
Second, and Ryan, motion second to authorize the village to go forward with putting the solar panels for the Eagle Nest on a pole.
And giving Jared's signature.
No, I haven't, guys, it's a big deal.
You just have to walk across the pound.
Yeah. Any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Extension cord.
If you pay for solar panels all over on my garage that I could tap into?
We'll just take the extension cord from his garage without the solar panels and run it over there.
You got a generator just in case?
Anything else? All in favor of solar panels for the Eagle Nest on a pole at Keller Park, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, aye's have it. Authorization to work on grant applications. So, we've had some, I think we're just bringing this back for clarity, just to kind of reiterate what we, kind of the process probably should be, so we're clear on getting paperwork in. Matt and Karen were authorized with Jared before to work on grants with that, that committee there. Make sure we're keeping that in the loop and getting the paperwork to the, and I think it's better to work in a group, so we have some sort of checks and balances, that we know what we're signing up for, and, you know, just have multiple people on it. But we definitely need the, the financial stuff and the signature authority to go through, through the office. So, I don't know what would work best on that. I think we're okay with the board working on, on this and preparing the grants, is that it, but the signature stuff, and it does, does need to go through the office. Okay? Just so we don't get cockless.
Not knowing what's going on.
Misalignment of something, right? And what's, what's signed up for, so. That's a huge debate, just, just keep everything, tighten the loop and get, get, get stuff into the office. Do we need anything else on that? Yes, just to clarify, yes, we already have a couple people working on grants.
I've got a couple grants to work on that are due end of January.
And Karen was, had contact from, we didn't get one from the stewardship grant.
We didn't get the one from the DNR, but...
Okay, yeah, but I think there's some follow-ons with that, which will continue on working, but, you know, make sure that Jared and Ray see it, so we can get those file things filed away and that's getting put in the right place. And then, yeah, it's just good to have multiple sets on, eyes on, on things, because I don't know everything, you know, when it comes to the accounting and what, what our budget is and things, it's always good to say, I think you have four, somebody might say, hey, let's bring that back to the board and finalize certain portions of, kind of get a consensus, so. Okay. Any comments there? Anybody else want to work on a different grant? You, you potentially are authorized to work on with broadband.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, something that I could use.
I'm happy to help you write it too.
B two, either one.
Yep, just again, if you do that, write up something, just, you know, bring it back to the board or bring it to Jared, and, you know, he's pretty good about, you know, giving you a good either next step or what might be the best.
I think what we did with the grants Karen's writing, if it's the same for Ryan, I don't know if we want to do something different, but I think what we were doing is that Karen's writing them, she can, I mean, in coordination with your committee, with Matt and Ryan on that committee, correct?
Yeah, so...
Yeah, but in coordination, you're writing them, but I'm, I'm going to sign the grants and file them so that we have them in ours. You're writing them, and I would think the same thing could happen here, and we need something different.
He would just need to come back when you're ready to do that, and, you know.
We'll do some research.
Was it with Dean?
Dean Michie.
Dean will help you. PSC has a bunch of broadband Garrett grants that are available.
Yeah.
So that's, it's an important resource for us, you know, with our, our municipal financial challenges, so it's good, good to be looking at, on those things.
Yeah.
Anything else there? All right, thirteen F, bartender operator license application, we got a couple there. All right, so we have BP is...
BP's the one.
Okay, this one doesn't have a, a name on it. For employer?
Oh, for employer.
Yeah. What would we be working on?
I didn't take that one in. It goes anywhere in the village, so we don't necessarily need...
We don't need to know?
No.
Well, Collins, approve both these.
Yes.
Okay. So we have two, we have Shannon Belkey, I think, if I'm saying that right, I don't know if there's another. And then Estelle Gunter. So, and Collins looked at these, he's got a new form that he's been using for a few months now, so it, it's standardized sort of score sheet, and they passed the score sheet. He recommended approval, so I just need a motion to approve these two.
Make a motion that we approve those two people?
Second.
Motion second. Board has a motion, any comments or questions? All in favor of approving these two bartender operator license applications, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Aye's have it. Thanks for those. Okay, thirteen G, authorized placement of delinquent utilities, special charges, and special assessments on the tax roll. So, once a year, do we have a resolution or ordinance that says we do this, or we just come back?
Just a plain motion.
Yep. So this was the one from last year, it was Mattoon and Cotts, who's authorizing the clerk treasurer to place delinquent utility special charges and special assessments on the tax roll. So this is for state...
Says we can, but it's for all of our...
Yeah, special done.
Yeah, it's anybody who hasn't obtained their utilities or a special charge.
Right. We need another motion. I reaffirm the motion from last year.
I'll second.
Okay, all right. All right, so the motion is second to, oh, there we go. Authorize the clerk treasurer to place delinquent utility special charges and special assessments on the tax roll. Board has a motion, any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Aye's have it. Consider recycling special charge for twenty-twenty-two payable twenty-twenty-three tax bill.
Same thing, it's just a simple motion that you do. We don't have the dollar amount yet, but it's just getting authorization to put them...
We don't set it, it's the county that sets it.
Yep. So, yeah, the motion last year, approving the placement of a recycling charge as determined by Eau Claire County on the tax roll.
What does that mean, like, if I'm in fifth grade?
The county tells us.
There's an itemized charge on your taxes, you'll get your Eau Claire County, your school district, your CBT C, you're in the lake, you're Eau Claire County, and there's a special charge. Over on the side, there's your special charge. So the library, I think if you're in Luddington and Lincoln, I believe they get a library charge as a special charge for using it. There's a recycling charge that, because there's collection centers around, it's not part of their general budget, but there's a special charge for recycling that we get to pay. We get to collect on the tax roll, they get to tell us how much it is, and we get to authorize and set it on there.
What is it for, though? Recycling, you say recycling, was that, I'm just curious in general.
I think we, we won't see it, right? We just, yeah, we just, you get a, get a motion, I could be wrong, but I think you gotta get a motion to put anything on...
On more tax...
Yeah, and you've got to have the motion to put anything on the tax bill. And then it just gets funneled over to Eau Claire.
I can talk, I can talk with you later, I just didn't...
To be honest, I can, I cannot give you an itemized list of what they spend it on, we don't really have a lot of choice about it. I don't know whether it's theoretically earmarked for the collection center that's in the town of Lincoln's, over by their town shed, or if it's part of the takeback electronics that they do, is it twice a year? I honestly couldn't tell you what the itemized breakdown of how they spend it. We can look, but off the top of my head, I don't know.
Motion to approve the special charge for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two payable twenty-twenty-three tax bill. The county charge.
It's the county charge.
Got a motion and a second. Board has a motion. Any comments or questions on the recycling charge being placed on the tax bill? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. It's like a little kid, and you don't have a choice, saying, you're going to eat your broccoli.
Yeah, what's the point?
Where else would they put it? Like, where, I mean, what's the, so we follow, we go through the motions and...
I don't know why it doesn't go onto the county, because I don't know why the county doesn't love you. I, I don't understand.
Yeah, why doesn't it just part of the...
Because they don't have to.
The real question is, what would happen if we resisted?
That's what I mean, like, they're going to charge, they're going to charge, where does this go?
Do you need some line before I want to do this?
Then, then the village pays the county for the...
That's what I'm wondering.
And we would have to sue them.
Yeah.
Spend more money.
And they're going to win because they've got more horsepower, more lawyer, they're lawyered up.
Okay.
In here without...
We have about eleven minutes. I was trying to look at this, and it's just too much of a waterfall on everything here. I don't really have, I don't think there's really anything that falls here, we can jump and swap agenda orders, so we've got to wait until seven o'clock for the public hearing. Guess if you guys want to go get some to drink, or take a break, or have some popcorn, or...
Relax.
Watch some TikTok, what do, what do people do?
Too many people.
What do, what do people do?
Frisbee golf person.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't realize it started at six, my calendar says six-thirty.
That the public hearing was right six thirty?
No, that the meeting started.
Oh, we changed the, we changed it to six thirty.
Oh, okay. Yeah, change on the website? It's not, so.
It's not on the website? It's still six thirty on the website?
You're in, are you eating still six thirty on the website?
I don't know, we're back to the left.
Sorry, here you came.
Late then.
Well, I just felt bad, I'm like, wow, we're walking when it's already started.
Nah, you're always walking on a public.
Yeah.
So then you missed, were you here for public comment time and you missed a public comment time? Because that was at the beginning?
Yeah.
She thought the meeting started at six thirty because the website says six thirty.
We have ten minutes if we wanna go back on the agenda.
I don't think we can stay, we just wanted to come and see what's going on.
See what we do.
Yeah.
We're super excited.
Tell hilarious jokes that no one laughs at.
No, I'm like, oh, we wanna be more part of what's going on and just.
Yeah, we can go in reverse and go back to public influence.
Well, I thought we stuck, I looked at the agenda and the only interesting stuff looked like the new the new business anyway, so we came right at the beginning of that.
Perfect timing, huh?
So.
Look at there, it's six thirty.
It does.
It does say six thirty.
So if you look on the agenda.
The agenda's.
No, don't, it's not there, well.
The agenda shows it at six, but in our calendar, we have it at six thirty. Renee?
I didn't do the calendar.
I know.
It wasn't me, it was Julie.
What I was gonna ask you is if you will remind us to look at that when we come back. Get that to six. It wasn't me. Because this is just the reoccurring, it's the reoccurring, it's the reoccurring one. We don't, we don't set it, we just have a set of the reoccurring.
Look at it.
Commander.
Play it on the monkey.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not Kevin.
I know.
When the office was like a super.
I will.
I never.
Marissa's clever.
Oh, really?
Like her cousin, your own proxy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She serves on the library board.
She's on the library.
She was just linkeded to the library board. That's probably because she was here.
She has the car I plow around.
She has the what?
Car I plow around, she has a revival pumper stick.
What pumper sticker?
It's a revival, but.
Oh.
She's from Revival.
Behind your house.
Yeah, I plow around her car.
Behind your house.
Rachel, yeah, very.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rush, yeah, they're good.
Yeah, I was still over there, I never.
She's been there.
I know, yeah, yeah, no, it's just.
At Linda Mickelson's house?
I got really busy anyway.
That's where I'm putting it with her face.
Yeah, she's always here.
Like, everybody down that street had like two or three kids already, you know? Yeah, they lock us all up and. It's good to see you again.
Yes, very nice that you guys came in.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm glad to come.
How is the library board going?
Great.
Is it?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's great.
She's an outstanding member, we love her.
Yes.
I'm glad you said that, not something else, I hate it, it's the worst thing I've ever done.
Boring, I fall asleep.
We're pretty efficient, it's nice.
We're very efficient, we really are. Great committees, it works well.
There's still a vacancy, yeah, from the school spot. Any any traction there at all? The library board.
Oh, they haven't filled it yet?
And then Marissa, so.
The the school, the school has a spot.
By definition, it's the superintendent's or his designated, so it's not even one that. It's always been whoever sent us.
It's supposed to be a school.
You guys got three more books coming.
Three more books coming?
Has to be a teacher.
All the people.
The superintendent or his designated, whoever. Yeah, it's pretty much always been a teacher or.
They're so busy, they're really busy. Keans, no, well, they have to be at school, we're talking about a school person.
You said Falk Creek, Falk Creek Keens.
Oh, Falk Creekians, I thought you said Keens, St. John's, Dr. Keen, Dr. Yon.
I said Jamie.
Falk Creek Keens.
Falk Creek Keens, and so many of them have extracurricular activities or coaching volleyball and.
They haven't been warmed up yet.
Like, I don't have time.
Why?
He's calling sludge today, so Jamie sits, has to sit on the side of that tower and open the valves, so Josh comes and backs under with the tank, and Jamie just sits there all day without moving in the shade because the valve's on the cold side, sitting up against that cold metal, and it just.
In the snow?
It's not gonna get warmer.
We probably didn't pay him enough.
He didn't get paid enough today, yesterday, or three days ago, he might have been paid enough, but today he didn't get paid enough, whatever he made today, it wasn't enough, that guy was cold, we were getting, well, at least I assume he was cold, that's what I don't know, I said, I don't know if he's warmed up or not, but when we got done this morning, we were pulling out his bomber jacket coat, he's got on his practice, he was practicing for Saturday.
This is gonna be cold.
Saturday is gonna be cold.
Saturday's gonna be cold.
But you won't have to rush to.
Huh?
Carden up.
Yeah.
It's the tree dog.
You can hang it in the tree, it'll fly.
That's because it'd be so cold.
I'm strongly considering ground blind hunting with a buddy here.
Yeah, I think I might, yeah.
Not a bad idea.
I'm strongly considering it.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's gonna be four degrees.
Did you say four?
Four degrees.
Yeah, there's three or four days in a row of single digits.
Friday, yeah, Friday, the highs only seventeen. And I don't get much warm.
I'm gonna be making ice on the cranberry beds in November, which is apparently early, apparently I don't normally, but if you get three days of single digits in a row, you're supposed to make ice, so.
Well, the pond had shell ice on it this morning when I went to work. You got a pond? Is there any fishing?
I know, I I legitimately wanna put a dead pool in the thing, but we drain it when we pull the water off, so like when I'm gonna flood, we're gonna drain the pond, I'll pull essentially everything that's in it, it's right on Bridge Creek, but I'll pull everything that's in that pond, put it out on the beds, so, but if I were to put a dead pool in it.
Yeah, there's a lot of big blue kills down south in the cranberry bogs.
Yeah, that's what, um, what was his name? They go ice fishing on them, they've got just a massive.
Like, they just get big in there, I think.
What do they eat?
They're like bugs and worms from the mud.
Cranberries.
They're very sweet meat.
I was thinking, what do they do? What do they do, like?
In the winter.
Does it help, what does it do for the cranberries, like what's the?
You will flood, you need the water, you need the water to flood, so they don't, the cranberry ponds aren't on the beds, so I've got a pond right next to my bed. But for instance, I have to put ice on top to insulate them, because the cranberry bud can only take about negative seven degrees, so when it gets cold, you put water on them to protect the bud.
Okay.
So you have to have a lot of water adjacent to it, but they're not actually, cranberries don't grow in the water.
Gotcha.
Anyways, I know a lot of cranberry growers now, I've gotta figure out who's got the big fish in there and get permission to go down and ice fish them, because.
Uh-huh, yeah.
If anybody ought to be able to figure it out, I oughta, I oughta be able to be, if there's not that many of them, I sit in the meeting with them, I gotta be able to figure out who's got the big cranberries in their ponds. Big fish in their ponds. I wish it does have to be this cranberry.
Toma, it's a lot of orange.
The guy I bought it from, he bought a bigger one down in Toma.
Yeah.
And he's got a twenty acre pond down in, I bet you don't remember, it's very, it's very shallow pond, but he's got, he's got an old twenty acre pond, and it never runs all the way down, like, he he doesn't fish, so.
Sixty twenty. You're ready.
You think you're ready? This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. The public's here, the public. What, you've got forty-five seconds on the clock over there?
Do you want to turn that link up there, Jared, is that what that is?
Yeah, from eighteen? Yeah, I don't think it's gotten any bigger, so I have a new calendar by now. Probably fix that one in the corner if that's what flag's gonna be.
Hey, but we finally fixed that one over there.
I know.
Okay, here we go, it's seven o'clock, and we're gonna open a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three budgets. So there's, it's been posted in the paper, yes?
It has.
Good to go, Jared had a PowerPoint, if you wanna start with that, walk through that, if that's the best way to go.
Thank you, you're ready for me to talk?
I sure am.
Oh, yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah. So. This is the same information that you've seen in the packet, general fund revenues, looking at almost a two percent increase, intergovernmental revenues, a two and a half percent decrease, licensing permits and clients and forfeiture, we're looking at even public service charges, we're seeing a hundred and nineteen percent increase. Due to the small numbers of the revenue, once again, it's big increase, but it's only a small, it's a big percentage from a small increase, transfer from reserves, sixty-three decrease, but once again, it's a small number, so, you know, three sixteen thousand to six thousand. But our total revenue from twenty twenty-one was eight six eight zero two six two, our budget for this year went up, or for twenty twenty-two had gone up to eight hundred eighty-three thousand, and we're going back down to eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, or half a percent decrease. Half a percent decrease was obviously painful, we were going through our various things, we took a half a percent decrease in inflation when everything went up, so it wasn't the most fun budget time we've ever had. We're looking at a decrease of almost six percent, our general government, public safety took a ten percent increase, public workers took almost three percent cut, culture and recreation took a six and a half percent increase. Conservation and development took a seventy-six percent decrease, but once again, it's a small number, so it skews the percentage, and capital outlet took a decrease as well. In our inland lake and library revenue, these are not general fund, but we'll call them general fund adjacent, they're similar to our general fund as far as functions. For taxes, you'll see that we're proposing a tax of nine thousand dollars, in the past, there was that intermunicipality library fund that was a special fee that was charged for the library that was included in here, so you'll see, you know, we were twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-two, and the issuer proposed nine, that nine thousand dollars is what's levied for inland lake, there's not a fee, a library fee that's associated, so you're seeing that sixty percent keep up, fifty-nine point eight, but a sixty percent decrease. Transfer to the library, you can see what we've funded in the past, what the proposed budget is this year, intergovernmental revenue, this is essentially what the county has contributed to the library. And it's also, yeah, one of those years, there's ten thousand dollars from the inland lake as well. Other revenue, intermunicipality, cans, donations, but total revenue, you'll notice, is dropping almost five percent, operating expense down, up to five percent. Debt service, we're putting a little less tax money into debt service by three percent, we have this accelerated payment, what was projected for twenty twenty-one, that was the debt, greater debt that was paid down. Special assessments, we're projecting to see three percent less, a little less coming from enterprise fund for, into debt service, we're gonna see less by three point eight. Our general fund debt expense has gone down, our general fund, our TID debt is static, and our enterprise fund debt is very marginally different, I mean, that's the difference of rounding and what it is, but our enterprise fund debts, that's our water and sewer debt, is more or less identical. Capital fund, we're seeing transfer from other funds, we're putting in fifteen percent less this year than last year, special assessments, we're showing a little bit more in special assessment than what we saw last year, that's not that we're actually expecting more, it's that last year's budget was bad, if you notice, we had forty-five, we had thirty-one, this year we're projecting twenty-eight, or last year we had budgeted thirteen thousand, our budget last year was bad, it's not that we're bringing more in, it's that last year's budget was bad. Total revenues, we're showing being slightly up, or not slightly up, thirty-three percent up into capital funds, and that's just the money we're bringing over from savings on that, and the expenses are up.
What is the other?
You want questions when you're there, when we adjourn? To ask questions when we're there or?
Yeah, no, sorry.
So, is in the capital funds, where are the ARPA funds and the ZEEMAN funds, are they anywhere in these numbers? Or is that in another section, you don't have to move that section, I was just thinking they might be in the capital fund section or?
I believe you're gonna see ZEEMAN in other revenue. Do we have ZEEMAN in there, I think we have ARPA in there.
There would have to be.
No, because it was ARPA, he moved back, the auditor, we put him in there originally, and then the auditor moves him back out and puts him in a, or did he put, because he moved it back out, we recorded it as other revenue, and then he takes it out and puts it into what? Because ARPA is split, you see, in this number, you see one year of ARPAs and not the other, you're seeing twenty twenty-twos, but you're not seeing twenty twenty-one, because twenty twenty-one's already been closed, and I'm trying to remember how the auditor handled that.
He recorded in an asset or liability account.
But he took it, he took it out of the fund and put it, I think he put it to the assets.
So it doesn't show up here at all then?
Not, not for twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-two, the ARPA funds for twenty twenty-one is not shown in this.
Okay.
Um, because once the auditor, when the auditor audited, he took it out of other revenue and put it in an asset.
Okay, so just to be clear, it's in assets, it's not showing here, we still have that twenty, that's actually still money in the bank.
The cash is still.
It's not showing on this piece of paper.
Yes, the cash is, this isn't, this is not a statement of cash.
Right, it's a statement of budget, I just want, you know, so people, oh, well, you know, we do have some money, but that's not.
Absolutely. Sorry, do you have any other questions there, Karen?
Um, ZEEMAN funds, same, is it?
No, yeah, ZEEMAN's.
Right there on the other?
I believe ZEEMAN was.
Ninety?
Twenty twenty or?
I think it's twenty twenty that it's, ZEEMAN's that was reported, there was like three thousand dollars something in twenty twenty-one, but I think the majority of that was reported in twenty twenty, I don't believe that's shown here.
Okay, so that's just another, okay, so we still have.
These aren't cash, I mean, these numbers are just what it was in any given year, the cash account, and I guess I should have, I could have put a slide on that, I didn't put a slide on that, but maybe next year I'll have a slide. Or a lot on our cash accounts.
I'm curious, we have basically two hundred thousand dollars sitting in your things someplace between ARPA funds and ZEEMAN funds, it's sitting there.
Yeah.
So that, okay.
Yep, I could have put the cash account slide, I did not have one of those, but I could do one of those for next year. TID or our tax incentive financing, we brought a little bit more money in revenue, obviously we had increase out there, the payment is identical, and you'll see a little bit of project expense has gone up, or posing more project expense for twenty twenty-three than what we had for twenty twenty-two. And that's with the proposed engineering piece that we have budgeted in for the extension of mainland, or the road and retailers in the TID district. Enterprise funds, you can see where we've come on income, actually, I'll show you that better in the next one, but this income is showing the projected increase for the couple of items down here that's just showing as if we do approve the, or the rate, water rate increase, that is baked into this, so you see, water revenue is baked into that, as well as the expense, non-operating expenses showing a decrease, and debt service expense shows a slight decrease, and you can saw that corresponding mark in the debt service for utilities, but it was in. All lines combined, all funds combined, property tax contribution to general fund, four hundred forty-seven thousand, you see the special revenue fund, which is in the light, debt service and TID funds, those are all almost identical to where we've been in the past, those are very in line, they don't change a lot. Well, you can see where they're at, but. Well, you can see where they're at, but. And then this is one I actually wanted to. I wanted to. Show you guys for a minute. I gave us the last five years, I've got next year's, so we're, we're in twenty twenty-two. This is projected, obviously, we haven't closed out the year. So these numbers you see here aren't finalized, they're projected, twenty twenty-three is the budget as advertised. And you can see the last five years, and then I gave you ten years back. Look at what our revenue and expenses were ten years ago. You know, for instance, our library fund. Were fifty thousand dollars more in library than we were ten years ago. Debt service were seventy thousand dollars, eight. Almost a hundred thousand, nine thousand dollars less in debt service revenue than we had last year. Or ten years ago, ten years ago. Capital fund, we've got more revenues in. More expense. The capital fund portion, up until this year, included TIP. We included our TIP in capital funds, but I wanted, I wanted it to be clear, when you look at our advertisement, we had enough inter. Inter-fund transfers that made our budget look, I knew what was going on, and I can be confused looking at our advertisement. So I wanted us to be able to separate it out as clear as possible where money was coming from and where it was going. Just from a standpoint of. I just want the public to be able to see it as close as possible where it was, so we pulled out TIP from capital, because it's not money that's actually going into our capital fund, it's an in and out, I wanted to show. Show the separation there. So we did, and you'll see it in your advertisement, the TIP is separated, so when you see the capital revenues in, you know. Twenty eighteen of one point six million. Part of that's TIP, part of it's actual capital. So. Just pull that back to your mind.
Yeah, on TIP, we expect more revenue than expense, and it's kind of what we have had, right?
Yeah. And. Depends on any given year, so when we have a balanced budget in our check this year. Or a close balanced budget, we've got slightly more revenue than expense. But we have the engineering category, that the, we have an engineering category that says any money that we have. Excess revenue or expenses is earmarked as engineering for that portion of the project. It's not that.
It still goes to a engineering fund for that period?
For that year, it doesn't, it's not a fund in that if.
We've got money saved up.
Yes, absolutely, and if we don't spend it on engineering, that money will go into the TIP savings, it won't be, it won't continually be earmarked for engineering. If we didn't spend it on engineering, it would just go into that fund account, and if we wanted to spend it on. Incentive, or development incentive, or any other eligible TIP expense, we could. It's just that in this year's budget, it was associated with engineering.
So there's a budget category that does that transfer and shows up as an expense in that fund?
For the budget, it won't show up as actual. Unless we actually spend it, so, and that's why. And this is, it's just the nature of the fact that we've separated it out this year. So for this year's advertisement, I have what twenty point one's actual was and twenty twenty-two's projected and twenty twenty-three's budgeted, but we've never done it in the past, so they're all. They're all combined, and I can't, I can't show you, last year, we had more revenue than expense in TIP in that nest date group. And the year before, you know, I can't. Most years, that grows. There's certain venues where we've spent more than we've had, but most years, that nest date has grown, but it's all. Intermeasual in that capital fund, because it shows right here. The other thing I wanted to show is that in this enterprise fund. In two thousand and twelve, we brought in more revenue than we had expense. I think it was two thousand and thirteen, when I was looking at it, that we switched, maybe it was fourteen, I don't remember either. All of this earlier today. We switched to having more expense than revenue. And you can, you know, it's not a law, there's a little bit, and it gets more and more and more out. This is in depreciation, so it's not, we're not short cash. But we are short funding the account. So this. If you notice how much money we're bringing in in revenue, how much the expense, these are the audited accounts of how much money we should have had. And we have been under the last nine years. Now, that's including depreciation, it's just saying we haven't been funding depreciation, we haven't been. Falling in cash, we are on that precipice of. When we did the rate, what was it, two thousand and fifteen or thirteen? Two thousand and fifteen. We had a funded. Utility, and as. Time goes on, costs go up in different line items. Depreciation isn't funded, money's not going back into replacement. Well, I just, that's the only other thing I wanted to show in this historical summary, is that. Our expenses are year on and year out. How many revenues? That's my. My budget for. Oh, sorry, there is one other thing I wanted to point out, I apologize. On inland lake. And library, there's actually a one thousand dollar, one thousand twenty-five, one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollar adjustment. To this budget from what hit the paper. For the library board met, and they wanted to transfer a thousand dollars out of their reserve fund and put it into training. And then they had a hundred and twenty-five dollar shortfall in the budget that we originally proposed. Or was approved, goes publication. So. This, this proposed budget for twenty twenty-three, the adjusted categories, is putting a thousand dollars more in their operating expense and is taking. One thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars out of their. Savings and putting it into their operations, so there is one minor change, well, we presented last, but that's the only change to budget from what you guys have previously seen.
Alright, so we're still in public hearing, thanks for writing some good material for Q and A. Anybody have anything for the public? Okay. Alright, so we'll move, or go ahead and close the public hearing at seven sixteen. And move on to thirteen J, consider adoption of the twenty twenty-three budgets. As Jared presented here, I think, because I'm the same material we've been. Look at.
Make the motion to consider the adoption of the twenty twenty-three budget as Jared presented. Presentation.
Took a motion to adopt the proposed twenty twenty-three budget that's presented with. The occupation there, right? Great, there's a motion in second to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget.
Question. So you included the water increase in that budget, so if we're voting to approve that, is that approving the water increase? Because we're having that conversation after the budget conversation. And so I'm, I'm not in favor of approving the water increase, and that's a part of the twenty twenty-three annual budget. So I just need to know, you all will know on the budget because of that. That's not, you know, that's a separate issue here, because I know you've got a plan in there that, that water increases.
Yeah, that's.
Is in court, is included in the budget.
That's been a discussion since we had the budget.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that's still in there. And it's not voting for the increase, it's planning for it. It's not voting for the increase, you're planning for it. So this is your plan to make a solvent fund, and that's what the plan is? If you have a vote where you lose funding or revenue, you have to make budget adjustments. And then you go back and open up.
So I'm going to restate it, so it is clear, and if I vote in favor of the twenty twenty-three annual budget, which I think is great. Except I don't agree with the water increase, I'm not voting for water increase, that's coming after.
Oh, but what about this? Then I guess the numbers, or plan, planned budget.
This is a planning document, it's not a vote to increase the water rates. Okay. Actually, that's clear, and then, Renee, I would ask you to put that in a minute, so let me please. That I have made a comment, I mean, I can restate it if you like. Tim can restate it, I mean, he said it's a planning document, it's not a vote to increase the water rates. By voting for the twenty twenty-three annual budget.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think if you were to, this is going to be a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Renee, would it be better to have that comment as part of, at the vote? Vote yes with the understanding that. I'm just trying to think as far as how you want to record it. Doesn't matter.
I think, Jared, it has to be recorded as a comment, and that that's going in there.
I don't think you can actually tell her the point.
Because when you ask her, she'll get to vote yes, but this, I mean, it's either ask her, I don't know.
So Renee is in charge of the minutes, and she does her consistency, and you can make a request, right? Okay.
Okay. She's tied, and I think she's.
Well, what she's actually doing right now is realizing that she didn't figure out the dollar amount for the next motion coming for the levy, so she was trying to figure out what that was going to be. What else may figure that out? Because that's going to be the next thing. And I realized that I didn't have that. Okay. That's why I was. I can't get that on course.
So can you see on this? So, there's a motion in second to adopt this budget, when you make a budget, right, you're. It's the plan. Thanks for now, for operating in, that's what we're voting. Okay, any other comments or questions? Alright, we'll do a roll call vote if Renee's ready for that.
I will. Share. Brett.
Yes.
Yelzer.
No.
Goodman. Hird.
Yes.
Cots.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, consider adoption of village levy. So as. Every year when you have a debt, a debt levy, this is not like inland lake levy, but we've had a recurring debt levy. For, for, this one is, did she pull out a number?
This isn't a debt, this is, we have to put the number, so.
Oh, we have a number.
We're levying taxes, so this is going to be the five hundred.
Okay.
It's the exact sense that she's trying to get to.
But we usually make a motion that includes.
Yeah, that would be a part of the motion, but you might want to go on to the next item.
Yeah. Okay. Thirteen L, consider implementation of the public service. Last minutes.
Well, last year's, worded.
That's what I was just looking for.
I took it, I took it with me, but I want, I want to make sure I have it right.
I was digging over here, I'm like, I.
So that's, that's last year's, that's last year's number, but the number is.
Yep. We were going to move on, but then without the.
So this budget, or the proposed levy is five hundred, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay, what was it, five thousand, five hundred thousand?
Five hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Five, two, four, five, eight, nine. That number includes a twenty-five. Two thou, twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. In debt service levy. For that issue.
Twenty-five fifty.
Yeah. Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Forty-five.
Five.
Sorry, twenty-five thousand, I heard you. It's the library portion.
Yeah. Of course, I didn't say, last year we levy twenty, this year we're eleven, twenty-five, five, five.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this motion last year said to include an adjustment to the increased chunk fire district. We won't have any tenure, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what we'll be looking for is a motion to set the twenty twenty-two levy to be paid in twenty twenty-three. For the village of Fall Creek at the five hundred thousand, five hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-nine. And this one includes an adjustment of the lawful levy limit by. Twenty-five thousand, five hundred for the debt service levy for general obligation debt authorized after July first, twenty-two thousand five. And. That's it, that would be the said motion, so anyone wants to make that motion? Motion levy.
Second.
Okay, a motion in second, any comments or questions on this? And these numbers, it's just, they're all, what we're talking about, right? The increase in eleven thousand, that's just from new construction for the most part.
Yeah.
The increase of eleven thousand is what?
For new, new construction.
Oh, for the new construction.
Also, the way it actually reads, so last year, we were five thousand, five hundred and thirteen, seven, four, six. We took, previous year of actual levy, and we took seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollar increase to that. To issue it to the twenty thousand, or not, by twenty thousand, and then you get to five thousand, five hundred for that. Adjustment in the debt service levy.
Okay.
So it's seven thousand dollars for gain and new construction, five thousand dollars in the debt service levy. To get to the eleven thousand. It's not quite, I mean, a rounding, but. Five, five and seven, seven.
Okay, did everybody hear that? Yeah, okay. So we have a motion in second, any comments, questions? Okay, do a roll call vote, please.
Yelzer.
I don't understand. So I gotta say no. But.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hird.
Yes.
Cots.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay. On to thirteen L, considered implementation of public service commission water rate increase. Should be through. There was a public hearing a couple of weeks ago. Roughly a couple of weeks ago, and it went. And then it went on to. Elizabeth or something? For approval from the PSC, and so they said that would be two to three weeks. For approval from the PSC and so they said that would be two to three weeks and that that did come through. Um, that's what you were seeing on your packet. Thirteen L. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look through that. It talks about the public hearing in there, is a summary on that. Is the summary of what the, the rates. And why they came to their inclusion of what the rate increase was and how they feel like that. Is what's needed to make your water utility. All, I guess, or sustainable. So they are. Yeah, so this, they talk about the findings of fact in conclusion.
Yeah, wow.
They operate, stopper is up to, uh, commi- commission as authority, I was conscious of operating up into increased water utility rates and revised tariff provisions.
What page is the public hearing on some?
That is on. Public comments, that would be page seven, thirty-eight. There was some comment, but what did you request? Five, hold six percent and they, they planned for six. So they, that was. Shorty.
Too old.
Too long.
But then they revised a couple of the other categories. Um. Maybe had contracted money, so the, the current increase is less than what we originally, um, what our application was. And it's a lower increase, um, but they changed. They changed everything, well, they went through it, they said, yeah, we think this is right, this is right, and this is right, and we need more money here and less money there. But yeah, they, they changed five point six to six.
Um.
Because they work in Madison.
There is, I don't know if you, you know, okay, comment on the, uh, you saw the next topic of, of the ordinance, but. There's a title, okay, to, to remove. Uh, the fees and everything that's already kind of structured by the PSC. Anyway, we're, um. Regulated by them, that there's a duplicative information in the ordinance that it, it did need to be in there. Um, so you'll see, see some of that coming up, so be aware of that. Our ordinance. Yeah. Add a lot of the, the legal regulation details and. We were putting things in there, potential that would just come out, you know, it can't keep up to date as the PSC is regulating. Try like that. This makes sense. Our ordinance.
So what are we looking for here? I mean, at this point, we've, we've had the discussions, we've gone to the, you know, we've done all the research and gone to the PSC. They give us the report, I mean.
Yeah, for two, at least this year, I know the previous year, even the year before that, we went through budget and it's been talked about that. They. So it's been for a couple of years, we've talked about a rate study might be. And kind of got. Delayed at least a year, maybe a year and a half and, um, so.
Well, we've been kicking at the can.
Yeah.
To kind of, to kind of reiterate, since we actually have people here.
So we then voted to initiate the rate study with the, with the PSC and, and they go through with the staff prepares the, the schedule. We go to the PSC, um, and then they go through their, I don't know, they had to completely follow all the, the groups that look at it.
Revenue case to see how much money we think we actually need. On state revenue cases, they establish, then they go rate case and say, this is how we can space on your system and how many. X kind of meters you have, how many X kind of this, they decide what the equitable rate should be as opposed to H rate versus usage versus public fire and maybe a rate case.
This person came from Madison.
Well, the PSC is.
State government?
They, they regulate the.
I would add no more than you about our water system.
It's not necessarily about our water system, so for instance, the rate return. Um, so they have, the PSC regulates everything, they regulate, um, all sorts of utilities, so my guess is the tel- I don't know about telecom, but I know power, uh, water, uh. And some sewer systems, our sewer system isn't regulated by the PSC, I don't know why. Some sewer system are regulated and some sewer aren't, I honestly don't know that.
Sanitation, just to.
Is that, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, but some, some sewers are, some sewers aren't regulated, but it's supposed to be the protection for, at least. My understanding that it's, it's supposed to be a protection for, um, consumers that you could have.
For consumers, so that we don't gouge, that our water doesn't just arbitrarily raise to a certain rate because we just are not doing a good job of managing our utility. Because I have some comments I'd like to make when we're ready.
Well, Frank, you've been on here.
I was just, yeah, I'm wondering.
A lot of utilities are privately owned, so they have, I mean, they just set what they want, they got to make a hundred percent return. So they, they behind the public service commission, they didn't actually go in and say, did you spend the right amount on water? And they said, this is what you spend, are you categorizing it correctly? Is this, are you putting the right amounts in operation versus capital versus, um, water? Are you putting, are you putting your expenses in the right turn place? And then they go in and have things like your need replacements, you know? This need replacement, you should be funding this way, this you should be funding this way, and it's all regulated on how, how and where we can and can't put those funds. Um, so if the PSC does the revenue case, they're looking at, oh, we are spending the same, is this being categorized correctly? And then for instance, the rate of return. Um. You can read, and I'll talk about rate return, the, you know, when the application went in, we requested five point six, that was what it was. Um, inflationary or financial markets have changed since then and we think we need to have a higher rate of return in five point six. So we're, we're using six percent and that's, and it's all based on what every other utility doing around. And I don't know how big of a jump these, should we be looking at everything Minnesota, he says the PSC was constant only. I think the PSC was constant only, but there isn't sound utility principles applying to everybody.
And because we haven't been doing kind of those baby steps along the way, now it's, now it feels like a giant leap. So we're kind of in a tricky.
The, the public service commission is an extra governmental body.
To protect. Right. So give a few things here and then we'll do the hand up.
Yeah. Very nice. I have several comments to make, they're lengthy, and so I thought I would just let you read them so you know all the sweep and then you have it for coffee, so you don't even have to take the notes because I'm going to just read my comments. So they can be, a lot of them can be a part of the minutes on the public record. Okay, the following statement is submitted by Karen Hurd on the 14th, twenty twenty-two during the village board meeting, this is all public record. I have opposed to the water rate increase, so the following is necessary background information for the record regarding my opposition to the water rate increase. On April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the village administrator brought to the village board the possibility of having a water rate study done with the public service commission. The study would provide information as to whether our water rates are adequate in covering the cost of operating utility. As the water sewer bill was and is one of the major concerns of many Fall Creek residents, I was hesitant to engage in any activity that would cause an increase of this bill to the residents. I specifically queried at the April eleventh, twenty twenty-two board meeting. If doing a rate study would A, cost the village any money to have it done, and B, would having a rate study done obligate the village to raise the water rates? I was assured during that meeting that the only cost to the village would be in the effort and the time that the village staff would need to take to fill out the paperwork. I was also told that having the study done would not obligate the village to raise the rates. Based on these answers, which I did not question, I agreed to go forward with the water rate study. On September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, a special board meeting was held to discuss the results from the finished water study. It was determined by the PSC that a forty-three percent increase was needed to bring the rates up to the level needed for operation, maintenance, and future costs for replacement of the water utility. The village administrator calculated this forty-three percent increase to translate to an increase of seventeen dollars per month for the average household in Fall Creek. The purpose of the special board meeting was to challenge the PSC conclusion with further data or to not respond to the notice, which in effect would say that the village agreed with the PSC findings. At this meeting, I specifically asked if we did not respond to the PSC notice, would that obligate the village to raise the rates? I was told it would not obligate the village. I was concerned that we were backing ourselves into a corner, and so I repeated my question to make sure I had clarification. I was told that it would not obligate the village to raise rates. As I had no issue with the conclusions of the PSC that water rates were some of the solution in my thinking, was needed to meet the cost of operation, maintenance, and future costs for replacement. I agreed to not challenge the PSC finding based on this information I was given, that it would not obligate the village to raising water rates. I brought up the possibility of other funding mechanisms to support the utility that would not necessitate raising water rates. After the September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two board meeting, I decided to contact the PSC directly to ask if the ruling from the PSC would obligate the village to raising rates. As by now I was questioning the veracity of what I had been told during our public board meetings. I was told by the PSC that the water rate study does indeed obligate the village to raise rates, although there is an appeal process. My concern was being misled throughout the months of our press decision was compounded by the October tenth, twenty twenty-two village board meeting. During this meeting, as a necessary responsibility of the board, we need to approve the monthly bills that the village inherits. I was shocked to learn that the village needed to pay bills of a substantial dollar amount in costs associated with conducting a water rate study. This was in direct opposition to what I had been told in the initial April twenty-one, twenty twenty-two board meeting, that the village would have no direct monetary cost to conduct the study except for the time the village staff to fill out the paperwork. The public service commission held a public hearing on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Although I already knew the answer to the question that I posed during this public service commission hearing, based on my prior conversation with the PSC. I asked the question during the hearing so that the village elected and unelected officials could hear it from the PSC themselves. When a rate study is requested, it obligates the village to a rate increase if the PSC deems it appropriate. The PSC did mention during the hearing that an appeal process is available. To give the officials who gave me erroneous information the benefit of the doubt, I would say it was a mistake or oversight on their part and was not intentional or meant with any nefarious intent. However, it led to a place that I am now objecting to the entire process too late. To be clear. I'm against the water rate increase for the following reasons. It has been a concern of many Fall Creek residents from before my time in office and during my time in office as a Fall Creek village board member about the cost of the water sewer in our village. Two, our country is currently experiencing record high inflation rates without accompanying pay raises to compensate for the rising costs for citizens in paying for utilities, food, gasoline, and other necessities. This is not the time to add one more burden to our already struggling citizens. Three, although I can agree that more funds need to be obtained to keep pace with the cost of running our utility, I do not agree that passing that cost on to the citizens of Fall Creek is the solution. Other funding mechanisms need to be seriously sought after. These funding alternatives can be sought at both local and state level. Finally, I make a motion to appeal the PSC ruling allowing the village of Fall Creek to postpone the water rate increase to allow the village time to investigate and pursue other funding options that could offset the increase in water rates.
Okay, so can I have your motion now with the second? Otherwise, can't talk about.
I thought you went right.
It's going to be most of it. Um, third time to the, for this session or talking votes, you are welcome to do that.
I just would like to mention that, you know, that, you know, when you talk about Fall Creek, the water rates always come up. Um, in addition to that, though, we'll say, but what you, you know, pay in water, you make up more in taxes because we haven't increased taxes. Um, unlike some of our, you know, neighbors as well. And we, I wonder, our previous meetings, it was referenced that we, you know, full way per capita and our facility and things like that, we should have. You know, one of the highest bills in the state compared to the systems of our peers. And we don't, we're not even, uh, feeling. So again, I know that, you know, to Karen's point, you know, of course, the citizens will see like, ah, gosh, our water, you know? But. They also maybe perhaps don't know the history of the fact that we've been not increasing and we've been trying to hold back as long as we can and, you know? So there's that too, I mean. At some point, it's not sustainable to just continue to. Say we'll keep trying to pull it from our dental on, or pull it from this place or that place when, I mean, those ones are going down too, and that revenue is not coming, you know, those ones either. Point out that. That's been part of our discussion and one of the reasons. And actually, you just set up a water softener system in our house and the gentleman that were at the house at the time were mentioning like the quality of our water compared to. Other places that, uh, near here as well, so maybe that's not going to be able to people, but. Taking care of our facilities or we have, you know, all the facilities.
Do you have a report? My comment, I, I have a comment, um. I have one piece of disagreement with you and another piece of agreement. Where I disagree, and this could be because maybe in the April eleventh meeting, I was sitting next to Jared and you couldn't quite hear. But I, I believe Jared presented the meeting. Presented the PSC, uh, PSC portion of the meeting. He, he did in fact say, if we do this, we will be allocated. That's what I heard, so that would be the piece that, that, uh. That would be the point of disagreement. And again, I might have been sitting, you know, uh, where we were in that meeting, I don't remember. Uh, where I agree with you is I also, like you heard, that this isn't going to cause us anything but our, our time. You know, we're going to spend employee hours doing this. And then there was, there was, I was shocked too to. Here, there was a charge.
Several thousand.
Several thousand dollars. And it was, and it was passed along kind of like, oh, I didn't think of that because that would just be normal business. As a businessman, if I'm throwing several thousand dollars on the table, I guess I'd like to know in advance. like to know in advance that I'm, you know, I'm obligated to do that. So I was, I was a bit surprised on that piece. And, and, and I don't, you don't need a defendant. Yeah, it's just, that was, that was part of it. So then, so that's my disagreement, that's my agreement. So then the question that comes to my mind then is, Karen, how, how do we skin this cap? How do we, we've been delaying on this for a while now? And we gotta come up with some way to fund this stuff instead of just taking from. I don't have any solutions.
The thing that we have to dig deeper, and I'm not saying anybody hasn't done it or not or anything, but I have become aware in the past two years, and I started subscribing to the PSC and to when they give out grants for different water projects or whatever there are, and I'm just astounded at the amount of money that has been given in grants. There is a myriad of grants that we could have applied for to help us, and so at least we should be investigating. Maybe you won't qualify them for them or not, we should look at that. We should, we should consider any other possible thing. I know that we have talked about this until everybody is sick of hearing the word seppage, but even Jared mentioned at the public hearing when we were rezoning the rates of our property, how destroying my houses would add to our facility because we're underutilizing our facility. And, and we have people that are interested, but they, I have told them, don't bother because they were not receptive, that our public works is not prepared or receptive to do that. And so that's still something, not that we have to overwhelm our system and we just take it off. And so I still think that that is something, however, that we should seriously look at.
Can you just bring it up to your own swingy, even ask all the comments.
All of it, all of it.
Well, if you want to make notes.
I will in a second.
I think that is some challenges right now. So my recollection, and I partially agree to, but on the, the topping, when we were talking about fees was, we were actually talking about engineering and preparing the application. That was the context of that, asking, are we going to pay?
That was my recollection as well.
So we were like, no, right? We talked about how our staff is so better, no, we weren't going to have to pay APs to an engineer. It wasn't that, that application fee doesn't like go into college, you're going to pay out the application fees or anything like that. That has been taken out of context a little bit. And so there might have been confusion, that's fair. I mean, it's a confusing process, but to say that that was the context of that cost.
And I recognize what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'm very sure that's what it was. Now, again, it doesn't mean that it still wasn't clear to everybody, but that was the question. So on. So we still, the other, the other, the other thing too is we talked about different, the board decided, there was different ways to go about this, right? There was a baby lump.
Yep.
Some are large increases you could do, and then I'm just not pretty great. Or there was an application you could do and do small incremental. Do, does everybody remember that?
Yeah.
Is that an option? And what did the board do?
More of it, yeah.
Yeah. That was very clear.
Yeah.
Right? So if in your mind, you wanted to do some other option like baby steps, that was there. That was very clear. Okay? But the board decided, we had punted for so long, it was 2015. We were not solving, there wasn't solutions yet. And I get it, looking in the future, this doesn't preclude you from looking for other things that are great for the future. And those things are available. It doesn't, you know, if anything, that makes, you would have to do another seven to 10 years now on the next fee if you could find some grants. But it doesn't potentially help you now, right? It's seven years without an AP. Seven years is a long time. So you, you talk about providing and looking out for residents, well, part of it is providing services. You know, if you've signed up to provide utilities, you've put a lot of infrastructure in place, whether it's fire hydrants and everything else. And so your job is to help plan and provide those services. Okay? That's the way I view this. It's, and sometimes you have to make tough decisions. If you're going to get voted in, you, it sucks, people are going to be mad at you. And, and I've had this a number of times where I've had to make tough decisions, but if you can't do that, that's a problem.
We're all citizens of it. We're all, we're all going to feel the importance.
You don't want to do it, but, but if you could tell a compelling story like, yeah, we're planning for the future, we, we want to provide this service, the PSC has pretty much told you financially what they see on the books. So I'm fine if you don't want to budget and plan for the future, kick it to the side, you know, how many years is it going to be? I just don't see it. Like, I, I don't know what else to do for providing a service to the people. Yeah, it may be a tough decision, right? But, um, and on the, the public works comment, I, I've talked to people and I've talked to public works, I guess, on the seppage, and they're, I don't know that anybody's not ready on that. I think it was on your comments.
At the meeting, Jamie said that none of the public works, he, he said he spoke for Josh, and he said he spoke for you, Jared, if you recall, that they were not in favor of wanting to have anything to do with it.
No, no, that, that, they were not comfortable, but after, you know, it voted through, I mean, he said if it went through, it's fine, it would make it work.
I guess that's my only comment is, we personally don't like, and, and, we don't want, we don't want to have to treat it from an operational standpoint, that's true. Jamie said that, and he stood right there and said, you know, like, I know that I don't want it, I know Josh doesn't want it, I think I'm okay in saying, if Jared doesn't want to treat, I, I don't remember exactly, I'm horribly misquoting, I'm uncertain. But the, the option for us to make those comments is before a decision is made, but we are implementers. Whatever the board approves, is our job to try and execute and make work as best possible. And the board did approve allowing, seppage, mind you, not at the large quantities that was in the initial proposal that really.
We have a lot of that.
There, there is a limited quantity, but the ordinance does allow for seppage to be received as it sets right now. And we're, as, as employees or staff, we are absolutely willing to implement and to, to work within the ordinance and our limitations to, to follow that ordinance and accept seppage. Now, I recognize that it's not the amount, but Jamie or Josh or myself, not wanting seppage in the plant really is, is a moot point at this point. It's authorized, and if someone brings seppage, we'll, we'll do our best we can to treat it and to have it go as smoothly as possible.
So we, I just, the other comment on your number two is I, and again, we're providing utility and services, and, and I appreciate that statement, but to me, that's a federal state problem, you know, that needs to be, it's like we, like, it's been just passed down to us by, by policies. I mean, and we just, sometimes you gotta adapt to policies that are coming, you know, results of policies that are affecting, you can't ignore them.
It would have to be changed in the law because the PSC is working under an enabling statute, and so.
No, I mean the inflationary part.
Oh, the inflationary.
Yeah, like all of that, the pressures and, you know, the hardships that everybody's going through.
Yeah, the whole inflation thing is, yes, that's outside of the villages.
The municipality is not immune from it. You know, so you can't, you can't pretend.
But if there was anything that we could do to soften the blow, that's what we will be doing at the state level, we can't control the federal level, but our state budget leader is going to do everything we can to soften that inflation for the residents of the state of Wisconsin. So I'm asking the same for residents.
Yeah, well, the state has a surplus budget. We don't.
All right, so, okay, Chester.
I got a couple of things, some of them might overlap on some of the things that some other people have said are, and I am going to go off my best recollection, we can always pull minutes if we have. Ryan and I were not here at board meeting on April 11th, so we can't speak to what was said on that day. We were voted in or sworn in after the third Tuesday of the, or whatever it was, so we weren't here. I don't know what happened at that meeting. Just some comments. The board, including myself from past years, we've had multiple years or times to look for other sources of funding. And at this point, nobody has come up with any. I know Karen has brought up seppage. I know since I've been here, we did approve some, I don't know if that's the right amount or the wrong amount, but I know we did approve some, so I can't speak on that anymore than that point. On the fee things, I do believe I understand it the same way, that there was not going to be a cost because the, the staff was doing the work, so we wouldn't be paying somebody outside to do that. Being an application fee, I can understand that amount, I can understand how you can be upset by that, but in the large scheme of things, and I know this sounds bad, but $3,000 in a million dollar budget is, is very minimal, right? It's real money, but we, 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 the squad car is at Oakford Ford right now for $2,000. You're, you're going to pay for the squad car, we're not, not going to fix the squad car.
Right.
So that's just how I feel. I'm all about, if we can come up with ways to come up with costs from outside sources to lessen the burden next time, because there will be a next time. I was unfortunately not able to be at the public hearing, I had other obligations that evening that I had to be at. From what I see from the public hearing, there wasn't much, nobody filed a, let's see if I can make iPad work. Nobody filed a formal complaint, and we had three residents show up. Now, again, I wasn't here, I had other obligations, but I don't see, how did that go from those three? I mean, I can read what was said here, but I, I, I don't know. Karen, you seem to be closer to some of the people that have said things. I, I don't know, I don't see that there was much public comment on it. Everybody, excuse me, everybody knows about these things. The thing I am against and, is that if you don't raise the water rate, you're using the general public's money to pay the utility bills.
That's right.
So I am paying, you're going to divide that out by all the residents, whatever is left over, and everybody's going to pay an extra whatever, $1,000 for the year to cover those bills. And if I don't use any water and you have 12 kids, that's not fair to me as a taxpayer either. So that's where I have the biggest issue in it. Utilities, I, I've said it before when we were in part of this earlier, utilities are supposed to be self-funded, they're not supposed to make money, they're just supposed to pay their bills. And me paying your guys' water bill, and I'm just going to pick on you because you have two little kids and you're taking showers and you're putting outside and you're, you're...
They, they make them drink out of the toilet.
Making the dog drink out of there too, but I'm just saying, I'm just using it for example that I, I don't think it's fair for a, a single elderly lady to be paying her tax dollars funding my showers. That's just how I feel unfortunately, so if there was other options present, I would be more than happy to look at all of them. Unfortunately, at this time, and I have only been here for six months, I don't see any other options at this point. I would love to explore all of them in the future with you over the next two or three years and find answers to some of these hard things, but unfortunately today, I don't see any here that are votable for me to say no to one because there's a close possibility of something else. I'm sorry.
And I agree with you, I don't want it to come out of general fund fee, if it's not, but there, you know, it needs to come from other sources.
And I'm good with that, but unfortunately, at this point, there's not another source.
Please come full circle to my question. I was skinning.
We gotta start working on that, but today is not the day unfortunately. That, that was two years ago, or three years ago, or five years ago, when we weren't working on it, it wasn't quite in the deer in the headlights.
Yep.
It is now, it's observant. I feel we should move forward with the rate increase and then continue to work on this, not just set it off to the side for four years, continue to work on it so we have answers next year or the following year or in the future.
Second.
We need to be proactive in that, we need to, unfortunately, a lot of this stuff ends up being reactive. You're already behind, you're basically robbing Peter to pay Paul, and I gotta do something.
So we're just doing knee jerk reaction. That's why I want to stop.
We're reactive, we need to be proactive, so that's what you're, this tries to help us get to where we need to be. And then you got, we got to continue the work in the future to get it right.
Yep.
But, right, we have gotten grants in the past, there has been work on this, so given with that.
Right, there's still a shortfall.
It's still getting.
It's not a knee jerk reaction when, you know, for the last couple of years, it's been like, oh, we just don't, we don't want to do that to people, and, or maybe let's, you know, instead of raising it, you know, a dollar, it's 50 cents, or instead of raising it, wherever, you know, it's, it's, we go a quarter of that, and that's what we did the last time. And so it's, it's, because you do, you know, the globe was softener for the last couple of years, and now the blow has come huge from, you know, the powers that be, and so that's why everybody's feeling that extra blow, and like, you know, you, Karen, with your, hopefully with your connections, you know, there's a shame that, because like Tim was saying, there is, the state has a surplus, so five, almost $6 billion surplus, so, but we're getting less.
Best way, I want to let Jared pen term and then if the board is okay, we'll, you...
I just had a couple of things that I wanted to point out. I, I, I don't want to go down into any of these points because I, there's a bunch of things, but there's a couple of things that I won't talk about. With seppage in particulars that are bunched and crossed, and Chester already had a talk about that.
Would you just speak up a little bit?
Sorry, I, I got, I'm bad at this, and I, I just plain, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I want to talk about funds not crossing. It's good accounting principles, Chester already kind of hit on it, that our water problem is a water problem. It's not a sewer problem, it's not a general fund problem, it's not a trash problem. When we're looking at all these other ideas, which is great, I'm, I'm all about any other funding source, any other grant, any other, any other opportunity we can have to help bring in into that water source, I am all about, but we need to make sure that we're looking at water problems in the water bucket. So seppage, so we can talk about, you know, seppage being an idea, but seppage doesn't help water, we can't be generating revenue in seppage and then bringing it back into water. We need, our funds need to be a water fund and a sewer fund and a trash fund and a general fund. So just as a, as a general rule, I'm all about trying to bring in any other revenue we can, but I think it's important we remember that our funds need to be self-sufficient.
Yes. Yes, can I, can I just regress on while you're there on that, on that very point? That's why I made the motion the way I did. It's because our water rates do need to go up, covered with water, that's clear. I agree with the PSC, and they did the evaluation, they're, they're the smart guys that figured all that out. But if we could lower the sewer part of it and the whole sewer water trash, because that's what our public sees, they just get the bill, and they're not looking at, oh, this was for water and this was for sewer. We bring it down in another area, then yes, then we have offset, we are paying for the water fund, and yes, it needs to be in those individual funds. That's why I phrase this, and pursue other funding options that could offset the increase in water rates. See, that, that's, that's the, the whole thing I'm doing, is just trying to, because the people, they'll be happy if their whole bill just goes, doesn't go up and goes down.
I, I appreciate your motion, I'm not trying to argue on one side or the points of first, but that's your problem. I just wanted, I, I, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that as we're talking, in the past, we've had, we've subsidized utilities out of general fund, and just as a general rule, I know we've talked about this a lot over the last couple of years, when we're talking about funding sources or other ways to do it, I just want to make sure that we're trying to keep those funds clean. I think Chester nailed all the reasons why, and I, and I can't say that better, I think it's important to keep those funds clean. So I wanted to put that part out there. And the other thing I wanted to touch on is grants, and Tim kind of argued, alluded to this as well. And Tim kind of argued, alluded to this as well. It's not that we haven't been successful in seeking funding. We have, for instance, a government doesn't give, or USDA, I should say. We haven't gotten grants from USDA. We get loan forgiveness. Our McKinley project, we just got, a portion of it is a low interest loan and a portion of it is principal forgiveness. It's not a grant. It's the same difference, but it's, but it's different things. It's not that we haven't been looking for those and haven't done that. But those are things we look, and just like Karen, I'm subscribed to all those very same things. I'm certain she's subscribed to something different. I don't know. But I'm subscribed, and I'm looking for those grants as well. I can't say that I follow every lead on every grant, because there's very likely something out there I've missed, and I'm not, I'm not claiming to hit them all. But a lot of, I have not found a grant yet that fixes operational concern. When you start talking about grants, at least for us, I'm not saying there are some special interest groups or targeted population in which sometimes that happens. But when you start talking about grants, they're typically for capital. They're typically for, we want to see this change. They're not for operational. You don't see grants issued to municipalities such as ourselves to fix budget shortfalls. I think you should do that with rates. The second point I wanted to point out in those grants is a lot of the money comes from the federal government, one way or another. I'm not sure that, how much the state does on this, but to some degree or another, everybody is looking at our water affordability. So what they do is they say, how much should you be able to afford in your utilities? Should you, should we give you a grant, or should you raise your rates in order to pay for this? So what they do is they look at the median adjusted gross income of a house, and they say, okay. In Fall Creek, the MAGI number is, is it 53,000, 54,000? I don't remember what it was this last year when we looked it up. But the median house adjusted gross income is $54,000. Yes, don't quote me on that number. That's completely off the top of my head. And they say, okay, but Fairchild is 39, and Augusta is 40 something, and they have every town, they have a census, and they say, this is how much the median house income is. And then they say, you should be able to put in 1.5% to water and 1.5% to sewer. And if you are not paying that amount, most of those funding sources, all the way, you might still funding, you might still get a loan, you're not gonna get a grant. So when we talk about getting a horrible, you know, Augusta got a little bit of funding package for their sewer treatment plan, and we got for ours, or... I don't know if that's the case. I haven't looked into it. I've just heard that complaint, when people complain about having high deals. I've heard that one quite a lot. It's because our MAGI number, or our matrix, says that we should have a higher water rate. Our matrix says the residents of Fall Creek collectively can afford to pay more for their water and sewer rates than the residents of Eau Claire, or the residents of Yasta, or Fairchild, or anybody, including our land. The study we did last year, we were putting this together, I don't remember, we had been cost of living in the municipality from our water, sewer, trash, and tax burden. We put that all together, and according to our MAGI number, our median adjusted gross income, we should have the highest rates of anybody in that basket 24. Now, that's not everybody to say, I'm certain there's people that have different MAGI numbers than us, but are worse off ones, or better off, depending on how you're looking at that. And it doesn't help the, it doesn't help the lady who's on social security who's on a fixed income. It doesn't help her. She, you know, you can have millionaire neighbors, and your median adjusted gross income can be sky high. It doesn't help the little old lady, and there's nothing that I can say that's gonna make that right. But from a funding standpoint, from those grants, I hope there's someone who can find, I hope there's funding we can bring in. Everybody who looks, you know, if we can have eight sets of eyes looking instead of two sets of eyes, that's wonderful. If we can come up with other funding sources, I'm all about it. But it's not that we haven't looked, but we really do have an accessibility problem in that Fall Creek is fairly affluent. Not saying everybody is affluent, not saying everybody can afford those increased rates. But when we look at the metric, when you look at it, we're not going to get them, and everyone who said you need grants, or you need a higher percent loan. And hopefully there's others out there, and I want to have that happen. But our metric says we can afford the rate, and it's gonna be hard to get a lot of funding, and I hope we can get a lot of it. But I did want to point out those, those couple of points that we are gonna kind of have to tend for ourselves to some extent. Because when we start putting in those applications, they look at it and say, yeah, we can budge you, but you need to have higher rates.
What is it for? Is it just to pay for maintenance in the future? Or what is this $17 a month for? Like when I do, you know, you do budget.
There's a shortfall. Come, so a lot of time now, Tim can answer too, but my experience is this. When you build a million dollar well because you have dirty water and you can't use it, and so you build a well and you get a loan, and then you gotta fix the street, and you gotta put water and sewer in the street, pretty soon the utility can't pay for all the water and the new well and all these things, and you get behind the wall a little bit, and then you just, you still gotta pay your house payment. Because you built a new well and put water and sewer in the new street because it needed, you need a, because it was 50, 60 years old and it's falling apart.
I'm taking it from another phone.
You have, yeah, you have your large well with the rate, make cash share, and your water tower, and let's say one of them gets a crack in it, and now you're getting nutrients and fertilizer, and the VNR tells you, your wells, that you can't use it at all.
Yep.
And the well's in the end, you're stuck. And also you gotta put a new well, and you drill it, it's not as good, and you gotta fill another one, or you gotta fill another one because it wasn't quite as good. These are, the wells were out, and so those are the things, like when you're going and foot the street, you can get a grant, or a McKinley, and, you know, they might help you with the water tower or the well, but you're still always gonna have those costs that you're trying to... So what the PSC is trying to comparatively say is, like Jared was saying, you, you have these tens of meters, you have this type of pumps and wells, and this many customers, this much industrial, this much commercial, this much residential, and you're so much money, we think you should plan for the future so that you're not stuck paying a huge loan bill. At their recommendation to you.
And then you save one?
They're, they've kind of got the standard, like formula, so to keep everybody, you know, as close standardized as possible. That's the way I kind of see them, and not have municipalities overcharging because they can't plan, they don't know.
They're the auditor. That's what they are basically.
It feels like a king.
Well, they're the auditor. They couldn't, when you, they come and audit your books for your financial side these days, come audit your books so you don't just raise the rates, you don't, can't just raise the taxes, you can't just raise the water rate. They're the auditor. Give them all your information, they look at all and be like, yep, this is what we think you should do, or something, or you can't, or you can't.
Is it perfect? I don't, I don't know, but that's what we have right now.
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody on board on any bets?
Yes, oh yeah.
I still have a question.
Yeah, I just have one question. Do you have a choice at this point? Because everything I've heard tonight suggests that you don't. It's kind of like that special recycling charge. You just have to vote for it right now, and then you have an option to go through the appeals afterwards.
We have an option to appeal it.
Yeah.
We do have an option. That was my option, to appeal it.
So it's something to say, it's something to say in compliance, you still have to vote for the rate increase right now, and then you can appeal it, and then after you get an appeal, if you get an appeal, then you can bring it back down.
The way it works is that it will, it has to take effect whether the appeal goes through or not, and so that water rate is going to happen. This is, they explain this to us in the public hearing. Water rate, rate will happen. If we make an appeal, the new water rate will go into effect, and then if the appeal, if they rule, you know, say, okay, we, we change our mind, then it would revert back to what we would want it. So, it's, it's too late. That's why. It's, it's too late. Because, and I did not realize that all this time, that that was what, what that was happening, so, yeah. And so, yeah.
Yeah, and there's, in this document, there's an appeal that says, a person agreed to wishes to appeal must seek judicial review or a rehearing, and an individual person can, can appeal. Okay, anybody else?
Any or none?
It just seems like you don't have a choice. Already had, increase has to happen. I can have any appeal.
What did you say last night?
That the rate increase is going to happen, and you just have to appeal.
Whether you like it or not, because now it's coming from the state, it's being mandated by a state agency.
Well, it looks like it's definitely for a list of agencies.
The only way we can avoid it is not to ask for the rate study in the first place.
But that's done.
And that, that's water under the bridge.
So if I understand this correctly, we won't give a second to Karen's motion when the motion dies, and we have to have a different motion to implement or some other motion?
That is correct. That is the correct law, because that's the correct law in terms of seeking for this.
Yep, so I have not heard, spent some time, to spend some time...
The president has posted a call for a second, and so...
I had called for a second, but, earlier, but...
Did you?
Did you use the second now in the appeal process?
I think it's a, to postpone the water increase to allow those to investigate.
I don't, I don't even, I don't even know that the board can appeal this.
We're a party.
We're a, we are a party.
But it's not a motion, the motion is to appeal it.
So then, assuming that motion passes, then we are paying for the judicial, for the, to seek the...
Legal.
Legal.
Do we have to pay more than that?
Yes.
And you're, you haven't said much. You've said a second now. You've said no much of times to things, then you made your dissertation and...
That's okay.
Right. Amazing, what, yeah, what'd you plan, like?
Well, this is just, I support to pursue other finding options to offset the increase in water. By seconding that motion, right?
What that motion is saying is that we're going to appeal the process. Karen and I, you are saying that as well, but what you were asked, at least what you talked about in the public hearing, maybe I'm, maybe I'm saying something wrong.
The action would be appealing the process. That we would say, when I talked to the PSC, they said that we could appeal it. Now, that is something that we should go back and ask them, you know, but that was my understanding when he said that on, when we were here for the public hearing, and then I also talked to him before the public hearing. I talked to this young guy, and he said that then the village could appeal it. And I said, because I told him, I said, I was not aware, I was sitting on the board, I was not aware that if we ask for a rate study, that obligates us to raise the rates. And he said, uh-oh, you didn't know that? And I said, no, I didn't know that. He says, uh-oh.
I could be wrong on this, Karen. I might have heard something completely different, but, and what I understood, the guy said that he was uncertain as to whether a party could appeal it, because we are a party, we are the only party to this rate case. He said that it can be appealed, but he was uncertain, at least what I heard, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
I didn't hear that.
But he was uncertain, he didn't, he said, that he didn't ever have.
So we would have to...
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not certain whether a party can even appeal. We are the ones that requested it, and we're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to pay the process through. If anybody appeals it, it's our request, we have to pay the administrative cost, so we are gonna page to request to appeal to the request that we've already put in. And if that's what you guys wanna do, that's okay. But that's what we would actually be doing if we approved this motion, is to appeal our own request for a rate study. That we are gonna implement it in any time.
So I would be, I would be a little concerned that because you file for a rate increase, you automatically have to take, and then they're gonna have a public hearing six months later? Well, that just seems like a whole waste of everybody's time at that point.
Well, see, so there's...
I just, I just think we're, it seems fuzzy to me.
There's a whole bunch of miscommunication here, just in general, and Karen's not wrong in, in sort of, well, in my opinion. So I'm just gonna start out there. I obviously, I've been involved with this from the beginning, and obviously I have a very personal view of how that happened. So, the way I understood this and the way I believe I explained it, and I could be wrong. Then we're just, we're just gonna admit the possibility that I'm wrong here.
Really?
We have to put together a case study, so when we, the village board authorized staff to go for a rate study, and we talked about the engineer, and we talked about all the things, about that we weren't gonna be paying an engineer, and what, and, you know, some of us heard that we're, what I intended, whether that was the case or not, that we weren't paying for an engineer to put it together, which we did last time. We paid $80,000 to put it together. Apparently, some of the board heard that we weren't paying anything, and that's, and that's very well within the case, and I apologize for that. But we had to pay PSC to review our rate case. We put together a rate case, and it's fairly in depth of, here's all those categories, here are meters, here's how much water we use, here's the expenses, and then the PSC, so you guys authorized that rate case study. You authorized the staff to go, as the utilities governing body authorized us to go seek a rate increase study. Now that group then put together, they sent off, and they did a revenue requirement. We got to pay, I can't remember, we got gentleman's name that says on our application. But we got to pay a gentleman to go through all of it and say, yes, I see this loan paid, and I see this loan paid, and I see this water break, and I see this chorus, and I see this staff time, and he goes through all of our expenses and says, yes, these are the expenses they're reporting, and I think that we should have this amount of revenue. They originally requested this much, but I think they have this much. They then sent us a letter, said, if you, if you agree with this revenue rate increase, don't do anything and won't proceed. If you disagree with this, let us know. We talked about, we saw, it didn't seem to be where, everybody went on the way. That rate case then goes to, or that revenue requirement, then moved on to the next step, which was a rate case. And it was Andrew Fisher, I believe. He then got to take that revenue requirement, says, okay, I'm X thousands of dollars in X categories, and he built a, and he built a rate case and said, okay, this is where I think it should go. Now, in a bigger municipality or in XL, they wanna go in, they're gonna present a couple of options. They're gonna put together three or four different rate cases, and they're gonna say, look at these rate traces, this is what we want, we wanna see an X percent increase, and they'll put it all together. We're a simplified rate case. We didn't even go to the full PSC. We had an administrative judge. We didn't have a three judge panel. We didn't go to the full commission. It's, these are small municipalities on run-of-the-mill operations. This is more or less a staff decision. We didn't even go to the full Public Service Commission. It was delegated to somebody to just take care of one of these run-of-the-mill ones, which is what happened. Andrew Fisher, I believe it was Andrew Fisher, but a PSC staff then put together a rate case and said, this is what we think you need. If you guys disagree with that, if you think it needs to be something different, you notify us, otherwise in 10 days, we're scheduling the public hearing to go with that. We had a meeting. We talked about it. We didn't disagree.
So that was the October meeting?
Yeah, that's...
That was the 28th of September. That's the September meeting that we called.
Right, because that's where we got confused on that night when we decided to move forward. We, at that point, whatever meeting that was, October, yeah, so that's the night we converted it from a, a study and a rate case to...
By not, well, by not, by not objecting, by not objecting, we, or they continued. Now, to Karen's point, I believe that was the meeting that Karen asked. Now, this isn't the final step. I did, I did affirm that we have to update our ordinance. That, and if you look at page two of the findings, the administrative judge says that they're authorizing the increase. They're authorizing us to increase our rates. Everything I could read said that we, they were authorizing us to increase. So when Karen questioned, I said, yes, we will still have to update our ordinance.
Did they authorize us to increase? Where does this say that you have?
That's a really good question, but the PSC, so Karen, Karen alluded to it in the October 28 meeting, or whatever. I don't remember the date, but Karen alluded to it, so I actually called the same Public Service Commission prior to that meeting as well. The answer I got was, I've never heard of any utility request a rate case and not, not move forward. He said, I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but it's my understanding that once we decide it's obligatory, and you don't have a choice, said, I'm not an expert, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is that it's obligatory. Now, a couple of days later, we gave whatever it was, we had the hearing, Karen asked the same question to the administrative judge.
The administrative judge, and he made very clear, you were obligated.
Well, he started by making it very clear, and then he said, well...
Well, there's appeal.
Well, and that's what he said. He said, well, hang on a second. My, my inner attorney or something, I don't remember how he said it, but my inner attorney's coming in here, and, and I could be wrong on this. I might have misheard him, and I just... But the way I heard, he said, well, you guys are a party, and this is where I said previous, that you guys are a party, because I'm not certain that you could appeal it. But somebody can appeal, and maybe you guys can. They can appeal the process, and then it would go to her or to his boss. I don't know if that's to the three. Um, they can appeal the process, and then it would go to her or to his boss, I don't know if that's to the three commissioner or to the full commission, I don't know what that next level is of appeal. Um, but in the past, the way we have always done this, at least from my understanding, this is, that the PSC has authorized us to increase this rate. So at this meeting, the village board would authorize the rate increase and set an implementation date, um, which is still, if, if you decide not to appeal, I would still recommend that that's what a further motion says, is to authorize the rate increase and to set and establish, or a date. If we were to do nothing from what Mr. Fisher said, and then what the administrative judge's name, I can't remember, said, is that it will implement itself in forty-five days if we do not, or forty-five days in a year.
Is it January or something?
It will implement itself whether we do anything or not at these approved rates, which is why the next agenda item is for us to take it out of our ordinance, because if we are not approving it, and once you go to that point, the PSC approves it, that's why I asked to pull that out of the ordinance, is that if, but if not a fee schedule, it needs to be a fee schedule, we have to have it. But if we were to not want to do this, or if we said, no, I, we're not doing it, we could have an ordinance that said one thing, and a fee schedule that said the opposite, we have the ability to be off, and I was trying to go with that. Um, but from what I understand, what we are looking at for is either a motion to appeal, which means if you're, please, find your sense, if we decide that we didn't want to do this, and we don't want to do this process, then we can appeal it. I'm uncertain to whether or not we could ask for another rate increase within another three years, once you do a rate increase study, you're limited for three, it's three years, correct? There's a time limit, forgive me if I'm wrong on the timeframe, it might not be three years, but there is a...
Did you mention that before?
Well, I, I just want to make, I'm not, I'm not looking at the, I'm not, I'm not looking at the, I'm not, I'm not looking at the three years, like, go, time to that, but I'm uncertain as to whether or not we could even request if we wanted to. But if the underlying principle still holds, all the reasons we asked for the rate increase, all the problems we have with our budget, all the problems we're going to have with the budget, apply today, they're going to apply next year, two years, and in three years. Um, still wanting to increase other opportunities for funding, still wanting to do all those other things, still apply, but we're looking quite literally paged to argue with ourselves, and said, yeah, we know we said we wanted this rate increase, but we don't want that much of a rate increase, we don't want that increase right now, we need to pay to argue with ourselves, and if they say, no, you guys need that rate increase, then, then is what it is.
So we don't control it?
We're leaving behind that.
Ever, we can never have low increase.
We can never, we can never add...
I think the problem for some of us is that we lost, and we didn't understand at what point we okay to keep going on, tie us down to.
No, we understood in the very beginning, we said, because we were having the conversation, shit, what are we going to do about the, with the water situation? In fact, that it's not, it's not a standalone entity, it's not paying for itself, you know, we're going back and forth with all these things. What is a possibility? A rate study. A rate study will give us solid data, solid numbers, that will give us an accurate picture of what it is, we, how much we need to increase, because we didn't want to say, we're going to increase, you know what? Everybody's seventy-five dollar a month increase, or everybody's a two dollar a month increase, because both of those would be totally...
From what I said earlier, that's not an argument, and the only thing I'm bringing up is that somewhere during the process, somewhere in October, I'm guessing, it sounds like, when we agreed to decide to have a public hearing, at that point, it was a done deal.
The decision to seek rate increase was in April, that's when it was authorized, and we could have...
That was a study. You're keeping there as a study, a study is not a rate increase.
What we authorized was this, what we authorized was the study after.
So, so if I just want to do the study, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to, I'm not, I'm just trying to completely understand, so I'm not, if we asked in April to do a study, at that point, just because we decided to do a study, we commit to doing whatever the study says?
No, this is what I was trying to say, so when we off, so when the staff was authorized in April to put together the rate case study, um, we put in the application, that's our ball roll.
Yes.
Um, at that point, the train was moving, if we wanted to get off the train, we had to get off the train at the revenue case or at the rate case. The train had already started down the track.
I understand.
So, so we could have...
So when was, so when were those two cases, when, when did we, was that June or July? I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, so at some point in a monthly meeting, we got the case and we moved forward as a board?
So that, and I believe this is...
September twenty eighth.
It was September twenty eighth.
Okay.
And we held that special meeting for that very purpose, that if we needed to bail, because, because at that point, I had the letter and I could bail, but it wasn't me.
Correct.
So, and that's why we had to hold the special order meeting.
So basically, end of September.
We had to hold the special order meeting because we wouldn't have had, then, within five days.
And the board voted at night to move forward.
Yes.
Yeah.
Understanding or not understanding, that that would mean, when we move forward, the rate increase became rejected.
Yeah.
So the public hearing, a month later, has about zero value.
As far as this board is concerned, the administrative person could have taken that public hearing.
From the PSC?
Yeah, the PSC.
If everybody from Fall Creek showed up here, they could have said, okay, we changed their mind?
Well, for sure, those people could appeal, who are on the floor, whether these people can appeal, but for sure, those people could appeal.
Yeah, so...
And there was confusion at this meeting, I remember going back a couple of times, saying, Karen, I don't think you're understanding, because you made comments that you wanted to maybe do it in steps, and it's like, that decision had to be made before, you have to change this if you want to change something, you have to change this, I kept going back a couple of times, so I think that things were explained as best they could, but it doesn't mean that everything was understood. But intent was to explain, you know, like, to me, this is difficult to be pointing out where you think wrong was done, and I believe that everything wasn't perceived and understood correctly, so, well...
I have a question. Based on what we've talked about, and, uh, the forty-five day, do nothing and it changes in forty-five days. My question is, if we can set the date, what is the, what is the Overton window on, on the end of it? Like, i- is it, uh, March? Can we, can we delay it till June? Can we delay it? Wha- what is that window for us?
It started the day we got this letter for the forty-five days, typically you want to set that for a building period, so, the way I understand, am I wrong?
Okay, so if we were going to, if we were as a, a body, all hot to go and get the money, we would have, we would have done it like that, right? Is what you're saying? And if we didn't want to, we have a forty-five day window where we could delay, we could delay forty-five days, is that what you're, I understand...
Well, I understand, you're giving forty-five days so you can meet up with your building cycle, so we got the approval on November, whatever day prior, November eleventh, we got the approval letter. Um, and I think they said that this goes into effect the next day, it says service date eleven, I think, somewhere near, it says the twelve, but I could be wrong, I might have gone with the eleven. So that's our service date, that's what started the clock ticking, so we have a utility building cycle. So what I thought we were going to do, and maybe you still, I don't know, I don't know any option, is what I thought we were going to do was set an implementation date, where we would say on December first, or what I was hoping we would do is January first. Um, we were going to implement the new rate schedule so that it's for the twenty twenty-three budget year, that we implement the schedule on such and such a date, and I have to send back to the PSC that says, yes, um, we've set the date and we're setting it for January first. That would implement that, uh, rate case, it's, we've adopted it, and we are setting it to go into effect on such and such a date. If we don't do that, the PSC is going to say it goes into effect.
And so I still don't believe my question's unanswered, what is the Overton window?
I don't know what you mean by that.
All right, okay, what is, what is the, uh, you, you said if we, if we mechanically do that, and we start the new rate January first, what's to say we can't start it June first of twenty twenty-three?
Forty-five days from the service date.
Okay, that's what the PSC is, so that, okay.
I believe it's twenty, I, I believe it's forty-five days.
We need to double tax that, but, yes.
Well, you, you have the document as well, um, yeah, we, we can, we can re-correct, but...
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second. We're going to have to have a vote on that, um, I guess we've been around a couple of times, I guess the way we look at this is, we're still in charge of the utility, and we're trying to, all the utility, come with the budget, we talked about this for a couple of years, we talked about what I understood, the two options, do the study, the board knew what we're doing. I, I'm not one, and, yeah, I'm sure I'm confused, I'm not going to blame anybody else, I wanted to know more, I should have known more. Karen, yeah, I, I'm confused, because it was in our ordinance, like, we had a vote on it, because we got to have two meetings, right, to approve an ordinance, so it sure looked like we were in charge of something. But I chalked that up to a lesson, for me, for sure, yeah, but I'm not going to blame somebody else, right, that's my own fault. But it doesn't change that we, what we talked about originally, water was not really well. You went to your county here, and you did your first budget after four months, actually, sewer didn't look too bad, general fund was okay, but your guys' water is a problem. I remember, that was four months into him being, and we started talking about that, and we even talked about it a little bit before that, too, with auditor, we'd have a finding, and says, hey, doesn't look like you guys are saving much on water.
Okay, so we got one here, we...
So...
And I don't think everybody...
It was a problem, it's been a problem since twenty, when did you start, twenty twenty? So over the past two years, it's been a problem, we knew about it, and we've been talking about it. And I said before, I'm okay, I mean, I try to do other tough things in this, and it's not the funnest position to be in, but I'll, I'll make tough decisions if it's the right one, and I know it's bad issue there, so that, that's the way I, I look at it. Utility stand on their own, make them solvent, continue to accrue funding sources, that is, I'm ready from doing this, but if you can't, can't, so, look what it did to sewer, probably years ago, that's another lesson learned. But if you want to save, save face and say, oh, I didn't vote, but I can, on the road for the next person that comes in in two years, and then it gets better. That's, that's an option, too.
Should we have a vote?
Well, we have a motion and a second, so I'm, I'm not sure, we, we could try to appeal, um, we would have to seek it out, it's fine, it's a good motion, but, um...
Do you have a vote on that?
So the motion is to appeal the PSC ruling, as, I think, as the village board, right?
Yeah.
To postpone the water rate increase to all village, and to address the increase of other funding options that could offset the increase of water rates. So we got a motion and a second, you got those?
You do?
Okay.
I have, it makes sense to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll, if everybody's okay, we go into votums, okay?
Goodman?
No.
Or, S? Cott? No.
No.
Brad?
No.
Amy?
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, the noes have that one, so we still are at the point, um, we're, we're, we're just following on to here, we're going to have to update our ordinance and get things cleaned up there, but for this one, I think, um, we need to move on from this, um, if we take no action, we need an implementation date of some sort.
If someone was going to make a motion, January one would be a real clean, or December thirty-first would be a real clean time to...
Which one?
I don't care which, December one, or January one, not December one, January one, twenty twenty-three, or if someone was to establish the, uh, PSC rate increase.
Is that within the eight days?
Yeah, and implement it on January first.
Motion to implement on January first?
Okay, motion and a second, implement on January first, the PSC's water rate increase, uh, approval. Any comments, questions, anything further? So, turn your... You're going to agree to that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we'll call.
I really am.
Can you read back the motion, please?
To implement PSC's rate increase on January first, to the twenty twenty-three. Or, no? Uh, yes. And two?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Amy?
Sorry.
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
Okay.
You do.
Thank you very much.
Are you going to get any questions? Because I just voted myself off, and I figure people off.
Now, everybody should thank you for what we do for a garbage for us. Jared's garbage fills a hundred bucks a month.
Yeah. I didn't get it every other week.
Yeah. Yeah. There are two things about the village.
The circuit cannot...
Move forward, yeah, move forward. Update village, I would call a great schedule piece, so this is pretty much taken out of what they provided rate, what it is, piece.
Uh, there's two things, so the changes in seven, and all of them, he was going through, um, tracks, all the fees that we are already charging, but they're in tracks, and in our ordinance, it says twenty-five, five hundred, whatever it was. And so when we updated it, it's, and it's the fees that we are already charging, but it's not on the schedule. And then it's removed, and then it's putting in the sewer rates, and the water rates, and the trash rates, all in the fee schedule, so that... Every, so every time we update an ordinance, and we pull something out of the ordinance, we're putting it into the fee schedule every time. Whatever we're charging for building fees, or whatever it is, we're putting it in the fee schedule, and it's one place for this, is what it costs to do business in the village.
Any questions there? It's all red line. What?
So are these fees increased, Jared, or are they the same what we have, they're just in the ordinance, we're just putting them in a table instead?
For the ordinance, that's the case, but if you notice at the bottom, um, I'm putting in the water and sewer, and...
At the new rates.
At the new rates.
The new water.
The new water rates is in the bottom of that, in the water and sewer, but all the other is just...
It's exactly the same.
It's what we have, so our ordinance says, uh, twenty-five fifty on some of them, but we have, we have to establish a fee schedule in tracks, because we have to pay all of our county's court, which is, you know, so if we get twenty-five dollars, it's a hundred fifty dollars, or a hundred and fifty-five dollars, just, it goes through the courts, it all gets paid. So it's just established, she wants already with the fee schedule, and she, but finally, it's opposed to...
Coming around.
Yep, but it's already what's been charged.
We would need a motion, a second, move out the fee schedule, it's amended. And if you, if you have problems with fee schedules and something particular in law, bring it forward to Jared, have a discussion about it, I always turn something forward to changing.
Need a motion to update the Fall Creek schedule piece?
Second.
Motion second on the fee schedule, any comments, questions? Okay, um, we do a vote call, it's one two, fees.
Cott?
Yes.
Mitchum?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
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 Goodman?
Yes.
Heard?
No.
All right, first reading, and, uh, first reading of repeal ordinance, chapter two fifty-four, water, and amend, and recreate its title eight, water and sewer. So once again, we're going through a chapter, and redoing it, reformatting it, it's the title, plus, you'll, okay, look at the red lines, Jared can probably talk about it more, about all this stuff that's regulated by PSC, and the rates and everything, that's our inner ordinance from probably twenty fifteen, have that red line out of there. So it's not, uh, hardened, hardened ordinance that takes two readings, stop date, and mostly something we approve, something like that, also clarity. Uh, and then there's, in taking that out, there was some, probably some missing parts that, that were taken from elsewhere, then, and talked about, um, yeah.
And that also needs just a little bit of refinement, there's a couple of ordinance dates, or citations that'll have to be added into that. Um, it also took sewer out, we already put sewer in this format, but it had the sewer fee schedule in the bottom of it, so we're striking sewer out of the ordinance and putting it in the fee schedule we just adopted. Um, but it's mostly striking out all the PSC stuff out of the ordinance and saying, as approved in the PSC rate study, or as approved in the PSC rate case on file with...
I need a motion, we have the first reading, to repeal the ordinance, the chapter two five four, water, and amendment, and recreating this title eight, water and sewer.
Second half.
Okay, motion a second. To, per, per reading. Repealing the reform, recreating with the adjustments, addling. That's all right.
I just have a question for the, for the, that I understand correctly. Hi, that's why I'm asking, put in the minutes, you know, with everything, just so that I've got the right, the right thing here. The way I read this, it's sort of just taken out, we did not, as a village, realize the PSC is regulating this, and we cannot do this. And so that's what all that red line you cut out. There is no mission in this ordinance, what the actual rate is, that just went on the fee schedule that was just passed.
So, I think we could show up in ordinance, I don't think that's anything wrong with just showing in ordinance, but we create the possibility that we can have disagreeing fee schedules, because if.
Yes, it's just make, it's just one more heading, I agree, the fee is the fee schedule. So I just wanna make sure, I'm looking through this whole thing, I don't see any fees in here, all we did is cut out, then, then now we're in compliance with Wisconsin statute, or actually, it's regulations by the PSCs that are enabled by a particular statute, but, so.
There's nothing in there.
There's nothing in there saying this is what water rate is. Okay, got this.
Mine, okay.
Not this, that's mine. Clear on that, at least in my mind, or is.
Yeah, it's just like the uniform building code, for water.
It's just for water, it's just.
Now we're owned by the state.
Yeah, that's basically what it's saying, but there's no reason.
So you go there and you get your own job.
There's so much that has to be done, I'm already all on it.
You want me to add to it, I guess.
Don't talk to me, if I have to rear my teeth.
Exactly, okay, for that, but you have a motion, a second, on the first reading, anything else? All in favor of approving this first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or post name, if I just have it. Okay, uh, so we need a motion to, if you wanna make this motion with the two nineteen, Wisconsin statutes, nineteen dot eighty-five one C and one E, when you make the motion, I think that's simple enough to do that.
Put them on one agenda item, because we were doing them in two separate agenda items.
Yeah.
But go ahead and read that part, the board will be going into a session, brief that up.
Okay. I'll read it, if I need a motion, okay, how about that?
Make a motion to move to closed session, per Wisconsin state statute nineteen dot eighty-five one C, and nineteen eighty-five one E.
Second.
Okay, motion a second, any comments or questions? So this is a motion, um, to go on to closed session for employment, compensation, promotion, performance evaluation of public employee. Or then moves, or, the other one is closed session for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. At the end of closed session, the board will be going into open session to conduct further business, roll call, vote, and motion to convene in the closed session.
Did we need to invite anybody in?
Nope, better, I guess so, no.
Ready?
Yep, ready for roll call, moving to close.
Mottun?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Alesberg?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much, it is eight fifty-three, we're.